Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. The live meeting can also be heard free on KUBU Radio 96.5 FM. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 7th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send your written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item, please.
Our first item is off-agenda comments, and we have three speakers at the time.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
Happy suddenly summer. My name is Debbie, and I'm coming to you today as one of we the people, as seen in the California Constitution, Article 2, Section 1, to follow up on our instructions given to you that all elections shall follow the California Constitution. We are assuming there was a constitutional amendment that allows the government to have the election on more than one day. When will we be receiving this information from you? In the meantime, Supervisor Desmond, we assume the board clerk gave you your copy of our notice, and since you were not here during the last meeting, I will summarize for your benefit. We the people have studied and learned that we have a guaranteed right to have proper and lawful elections. A couple weeks ago, the United States Supreme Court ruled nine to zero in the Smith-Spessiri case that the word "shall" means "shall." The California Constitution, Article 4, Section 2B, says, "Election shall be on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of even-numbered years." And the maxims of law say, "Where the law follows a form, the nonobservance of it is fatal to the proceeding, and the whole becomes annolity." It is the will of the people that you correct all errors and nullify any elections that do not meet the form prescribed by the people. I am saying this to you in peace and with the love of Christ, that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power. God bless you, and God bless our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I understand if I put my iPad on the whiteboard here?
Right there.
Where is that?
White.
So put it face down or face up?
Up.
Face up? Okay. Thank you.
By the way, no, this is not taking from your time.
Good, good. Thank you.
By having better data, we can do a couple things. Vaccines, a year ago today, by the way, we know that vaccines are killing people of color, blacks, Latinos, indigenous people, at about two times the rate of white Americans. So on vaccines last year, we saw that about two-thirds of white American adults had received at least...
That was the Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Javier Becerra, and he made that comment on April 14th, 2022. He said, quote, "We know that these vaccines are killing people of color, black, Latino, indigenous people, at about two times the rate of white Americans." On May 15th, I sent an email and a two-page PDF stating what Becerra said, including that link on the YouTube channel at the 45-50 mark where he said it, and you can scroll back two, three minutes and see in context what he said. On May 21st, I came before you, and I cited Health and Safety Code 10125, which states, "The Board of Supervisors of each county shall take measures as may be necessary to preserve and protect the public health." By the way, I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Ronald F. Owens, Jr. I was an Information Officer at the California Department of Public Health for more than 14 years. I pride my management of what Becerra said and data to back that up, that there are thousands of people that are being killed and being injured because of COVID-19 vaccines. I stood before you a couple weeks ago, and I urged you to stop the administration of COVID-19 vaccines in the county and to direct the public health officials to investigate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for your assistance.
Actually, is it okay if we have Elvira go first so I could translate afterwards?
Yes.
Buenos dias. Soy la señora Elvira Ramírez. Vengo ante ustedes ponerle mi caso de que yo estoy siendo desalojada.
I'm sorry. Perdóname, perdóname. Are you going to have a different statement, or are you just going to translate?
Translate and then, yeah.
So here's what I'll do, just, because if your translation time, I won't take that from her time. So I'll give her four minutes so that you can translate, and then you have your own two minutes to make your statement.
Okay. Thank you.
And so she said her name is Elvira. She is being evicted unfairly, her and a family here. It's a fourplex. So I'm gonna summarize a little bit. It's a fourplex. And so they're getting evicted for no fault of their own. They offered to give more rent and pay a higher rent, but the other tenant that lives in that fourplex pays double what they're paying, so it was better for them to evict them. She is a widow. She lives home alone, and she came home Friday late from work, and the property manager or owner, somebody, drilled a hole into her doorknob, so making it unable for her to get into her own home, locking her out of her home. She was served Sunday with eviction prob papers. She has been trying to find another place to move out, and everything is more expensive. But in her situation, she's been asking for more time, and the landlord and homeowners has just refused to work with her. She says that she is a citizen. She works. She pays her bills. She pays her taxes, and that this is unfair, that this is happening to her and other families in her building. Okay. And so we just wanted to come and lift up, you know, what continues to happen in Sacramento County. They live in the unincorporated, actually live in Mr. Kennedy's district, so we'll make sure to follow up. But it is continued harassment. It is continued stalking. It is continued issue that we're seeing to some of these tenants. This fourplex is being evicted because they're taking it off the market, but they did not evict all the tenants. They harassed those that they can, and then they're also in the process of selling, is what they're telling. So either they're taking off the market or they're selling, but either way, they're refusing to work with these families and give them enough time to not be another number of families or people on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one supervisor want to speak, but I was gonna ask which district, so please contact Zochi Gomez in my office. Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Does this situation involve a voucher, or is it public housing? Okay. Thank you.
Giovanna.
She already did.
Oh, you're done? Okay. Sorry about that.
We're good.
Thank you. And so that concludes your comments for off-agenda.
Okay. Next item, please.
Okay. For your consent matters, 2 through 38. For item 22, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. You're adopting an ordinance amending Sacramento County Water Agency Code Title 4, Sections 4.20.030 and 4.45.040, to extend the inner-zone loan repayment period and limit the initial water development fee payment to $200,000 when the required 15% payment exceeds $200,000. You waived reading on this on May 21st, and that concludes my notes.
All right. Any members of the Board? Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to pull number 34.
Okay.
For comment.
Okay. I'll read that into the record. Is that your only item, Supervisor Frost?
Yes.
Okay. Item 34 is Authorization to Execute an Extension to the Termination Dates of the Department of Human Assistance Contracts Funded by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 through December 31, 2026.
Okay. And I would like to go on record as a no vote for Attachment Number 4, which is the Guaranteed Income Pilot Extension. It's something I initially supported, and after studies determined that I have questions regarding the constitutionality of the project and also of the contract. And this comes from my reading of the California Constitution Declaration of Rights, Article 1, Section 7B, which prohibits the state from granting privileges or immunities to a citizen or class of citizens that are not granted on the same terms to all the citizens. I don't have a problem with extending the other contracts. I'm hoping, I've already had a conversation with county council that maybe we can just pull that one out, and I'll go on record as a no vote on that.
Okay. I'll make sure it's reflected in the record.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So just comments on items 7 and 29.
Okay. For item 7, authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute the agreement for installation, maintenance, and operation of a parking guidance system.
I just wanted to comment, and I know our airport director is in the audience, Sidney Nichol, and I just wanted to comment about this particular aspect of kind of ongoing improvements at SMF. This is gonna be a great addition to everything else that's going on in terms of making it even more convenient for the traveling public to find parking. For those that may not be familiar with this project, this will basically let people know visually where parking stalls are open and available. So this will help expedite the wayfinding and the ability to park swiftly, especially if you're late for a flight. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'm happily to, I'm happy to obviously support it.
Agreed. Thank you.
For item 29, this is the approval of a retroactive reappointment of 18 members to the Steering Committee on the Reduction of African-American Child Deaths.
On this one, I just wanted to thank the committee members for their ongoing service, some of whom are county civil servants, others represent our faith community and our health systems. And again, this is a standing steering committee that was established, I think it was 2015, alongside many other programs intent on reducing the disparity between African-American children and others in the county when it comes to death rates. So again, thank you for their time and their energy that is, I think, committed to one of the most important initiatives we have in this county.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the Board on an item on consent?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Oh, second.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, second by Supervisor Serna, noting Supervisor Frost's request to have that one item bifurcated and a no vote recorded.
Okay. Unanimous vote, and that was for item 34, no vote for Attachment 4.
Next item, please.
Okay. Item 39 is the Presentation of Resolution Honoring Jen Wilson Marchino, Eric Bodas, and Randy Jones for their heroic actions which saved the life of Andy Varonelli.
Good morning. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks, and I am thrilled to be here today to bring this item forward, to recognize two of our staff members and a member of the public that is a member of our Therapeutic Recreation Services family. But I can't do this story justice, so I would like to invite Mr. Varonelli to come down and share the story with all of you before we present these resolutions. Please.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Andrew Varonelli. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this resolution.
And I'm his wife, Kate Varonelli. And this was, they were at a event with Therapeutic Recreation Services. It was a softball, and the athletes and the parents were asked to play together. We went. He was gonna play with them. He was out tossing the ball to some of the athletes, and I think they were getting ready to play, so he walked over to the coaches mound, and the next thing I know, Jen is calling my name. She's going, "Kate, Kate." And I'm like, I had a medical boot on because I had a hurt leg, and I said, "I can't play. I've got a boot on." Right? So then I hear, "Kate, Kate, Kate. Does Andy have seizures?" And I was like, "No." So I went running out there. He's on the ground. They're already starting CPR on him, and thank God they did, because his heart stopped for a total of 25 minutes. They provided CPR for over 10 minutes, and then the EMTs came, and they put the automatic compression machine on him. We got to the hospital, and they didn't think he was going to make it. They just didn't. And one of the doctors came over. I said, "You know, I think he's squeezing my hand." And he said, "You know, sometimes that happens." He goes, "It could just be a reflex." He goes, "He has to give two thumbs up, and he's gotta wiggle his toes." So the doctor walked away. He's on his computer. I'm talking to him, and I say, "You gotta do this." Well, he does it for me. So I go and get the doctor. He comes over, and he goes, "Hey, buddy." He goes, "Give me two thumbs up." Andy goes, "Not full up, but halfway." He goes, "Wiggle your toes." He wiggles his toes. The doctor goes, "Holy shit." He goes, "That is good signs." And then things turned around, because they had put us, they had put him in a room, they had taken myself, my son, and my daughter into another room to talk to the chaplain, and that they had said, you know, "You can go see him now," but it was probably for the last time. But when this happened, it was a whole different ballgame. But if these people had not given that CPR, and every doctor we talked to said, "Do you know they had to do such quality CPR for him to be where he is?" And the whole time we were in the hospital, he was in the hospital for 37 days, and he was hooked up to everything and everything. He had double vision. His kidneys went down. They had to do dialysis. His, I mean, yeah, his kidneys went down. They did dialysis. Then his liver enzymes were kind of going down, seeing double. Everything started coming back. But his mind was great. It was because they had done that quality CPR that kept the blood flow to his brain. He is now, what, seven months out from having surgery? He does construction. He was a teacher. He was a special ed teacher for 40 years. He does construction on the side. He's back doing construction. It's just a miracle story. It really is, and it's because of them. It's really because of them. And the doctors and everybody else, but they started it. If they hadn't done it, he would not be here. So, big thanks. Big thanks. And thank you for recognizing them. Okay?
It just shows how important having CPR for our staff and people in the county. Thank you.
And these guys work with special ed, you know, special needs people all the time. We've known them for a long, long time. We're family. We are family, and they handled it so well, and they took the athletes away so they didn't, because a lot of athletes have known him for 40 years. So anyway, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We're happy to have you with us today. Yeah. So we have two of the three people here today. So Liz and I both agree that there's no way we could top that, and we could tell the story better than those were there and those experienced firsthand, other than to say that I understand that the hospital calls you, sir, a miracle man, and thank God for miracles. But miracles don't happen on their own, so who do we have here with us today?
Jen and Eric.
Jen and Eric. On behalf of the County of Sacramento, again, I can't add much more to what has already been said, but the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the county do recognize your heroics, your bravery, your skill, and your compassion, so we want to thank you and give you applause. Would you like to say something?
No. I've already said it, too.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd actually like to hear from one of the two in terms of how you receive training.
Because of the people that we serve and just the fact that we are working with the public, we just annually or every two years do our recertification and just stay certified. So it's just the simple class that anyone can take is what we've done.
Great.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
I'd like to say it's easy, because it kind of was. Scary.
Can we get a photo?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still sketchy. Two sec. Two second.
Next item, please.
Item 40 is Recognizing Family Health and Fitness Day and Free Entry into Mather Regional Park, Gibson Ranch, and Cherry Island Soccer Complex on June 8th, 2024.
Hello again. I do have a PowerPoint. If Metro Cable could pull that up, I'll make it fast. Again, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks, and we're excited to bring to you Family Health and Fitness Day. Once again, it is the second Saturday of the month of June, and we have a lot of things on tap for you all to enjoy. It's held every year, and it is a partnership with the National Recreation and Park Association. So we all know that there are measurable benefits to family health and well-being from public spaces, open spaces, regional parks, so we know that that promotes physical activity, spiritual and mental well-being as well. And we are very pleased to talk about our partnerships and the partnerships that we have with folks that help us bring these events to the public. So first up, we have Sacramento Republic FC is going to be hosting a clinic at our Cherry Island Sports Complex. Again, you can come here for free and enjoy this sports clinic from 9:00 to 11:00. We will also have different sports games and relays in partnership with Rio Linda, Alberta Recreation Park District and the National Academy of Athletics, again, at the Cherry Island Sports Complex. We're going to have a disc golf demonstration, again, at Cherry Island Sports Complex. We are hoping to bring forward a proposal to the Board later this year for a disc golf course on the Dry Creek Parkway. I will be at Gibson Ranch to plant a pumpkin, and I'm hoping some of you might join me as well. You can bring it home and grow a lovely Halloween pumpkin. And we'll be talking about the community garden concept that we like to implement at Gibson Ranch as well. So that's the birds and the bees, flowers and trees. We also have planted some beautiful wildflowers in the front field at Gibson Ranch. They're just starting to bloom because our weather was so kind of crazy this spring, not really warm until just now, so they're just starting to bloom. At Cherry Island Golf Course, we've got a lot of fun events happening, again, for free. You can do some golf stimulation events. You can also do some face painting, bounce houses, all kinds of great things, and that's from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We're hosting our very own 5K at the Consumptious River Preserve, so in the north, I mean, the South County, and that begins at 9:00 AM. Anyone can join. American River Raft Rentals is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, and they also are offering up some specials. You do have to rent a raft, of course, if you're going to use their services, and there is a $7 per vehicle entry fee on American River Parkway. Dr. Michelle Stevens will be hosting an event, telling people about the Turtles at Bushy Lake. That's a free event, free parking. Solarburn Farms will have their organic farm stand open from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Sacramento Valley Conservancy has a volunteer workday at Camp Pollock. American River Bike Patrol will be at William Pond, and they'll have information, hydration, and a vehicle, all right, excuse me, a helmet station. We have a Tree Treasure Hunt and Educational Odyssey. So I'm kind of bummed that I don't get to do that this time, because I'll be at Gibson Ranch planting pumpkins, but I'll join it later because it is something that you can do virtually. But it's kind of exciting. You can learn about all the different trees and things that are on the American River Parkway, and this is in partnership with Wild Ride Consulting. At Mather Regional Park, we invite you to join and park there for free and take a nice little stroll around the lake. And we are going to be reintroducing Agents of Discovery, which is a virtual game, kind of think like Pokemon Go, but for parks, where you can learn all kinds of different park facts, trying to bridge the gap between people that, younger people that like to be on their phones, and we want to get them outside, bridge those two worlds together. At the Dry Creek Ranch House, in the evening, you can join us for a car show, Night of the Rubbing Dead. And I hope that you might be able to join us... at Gibson Ranch as well. So that's the birds and the bees, flowers and trees. We also have planted some beautiful wildflowers in the front field at Gibson Ranch. They're just starting to bloom because our weather was so kind of crazy this spring, not really warm until just now. So they're just starting to bloom. At Cherry Island Golf Course, we've got a lot of fun events happening, again, for free. You can do some golf stimulation events. You can also do some face painting, bounce houses, all kinds of great things. And that's from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We're hosting our very own 5K at the Consumedus River Preserve, so in the north, I mean, the South County. And that begins at 9:00 AM. Anyone can join. American River Raft Rentals is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year and they also are offering up some specials. You do have to rent a raft, of course, if you're going to use their services and there is a $7 per vehicle entry fee on American River Parkway. Dr. Michelle Stevens will be hosting an event, telling people about the Turtles at Bushy Lake. That's a free event, free parking. Solarburn Farms will have their organic farm stand open from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Sacramento Valley Conservancy has a volunteer workday at Camp Pollock. American River Bike Patrol will be at William Pond and they'll have information, hydration and a vehicle, all right, excuse me, a helmet station. We have a tree treasure hunt and educational odyssey. So I'm kind of bummed that I don't get to do that this time because I'll be at Gibson Ranch planting pumpkins, but I'll join it later because it is something that you can do virtually. But it's kind of exciting. You can learn about all the different trees and things that are on the American River Parkway. And this is in partnership with Wild Ride Consulting. At Mather Regional Park, we invite you to join and park there for free and take a nice little stroll around the lake. And we are going to be reintroducing Agents of Discovery, which is a virtual game, kind of think like Pokemon Go, but for parks, where you can learn all kinds of different park facts, trying to bridge the gap between people that, younger people that like to be on their phones and we want to get them outside, bridge those two worlds together. At the Dry Creek Ranch House, in the evening, you can join us for a car show, Night of the Rubbing Dead. And I hope that you might be able to join us at least one of these events this weekend. And thank you. I know I've seen at least some of you have shared this information to your constituents through your newsletters. So thank you very much and hope you enjoy the day.
You've been very busy.
Oh, yeah.
That's a lot. Supervisor Frost.
Liz, I just want to thank you for all your creative, all the beautiful things you're doing with the parks in Sacramento County. And I also am very excited. I should have said something during consent, item number 13, funding from SACOG, special thanks to SACOG. And I know you're going to put, put it to good use for the Dry Creek Trail that will extend, I believe, into Placer County. And it's, it's an important connection for a 60-mile trail around the entire county, which is going to be amazing once it's done. So you're making it, you know, I guess you eat an elephant.
Mile by mile, foot by foot.
Yeah, one bite at a time, right?
Yes, I, I stated a goal of having that regional trail loop connected by the time I retire, so.
So you're going to be here a while?
I'm working on it. Working on it.
Don't go too fast.
Thank you very much. We're very excited about all that we're able to offer to the public and there's going to be a lot more great things coming and I can't wait to share those with you.
Thank you, Liz. All right, I see no others, so next item, please.
And we don't have.
No public comment on that.
Actually, hang on one second. I want to make sure we didn't miss any public comments. No. Okay, for item 41, this is the update on Coordinated Access System and Homeless Program Community Standards.
Good morning, members of the board. Emily Howken, the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. I'm going to give a really high-level overview and then turn this over to our partners at Sacramento Steps Forward to do the bulk of the presentation. As you'll recall in March, when we were in front of you to seek your approval of the Regionally Coordinated Homelessness Action Plan, or the RCHAP, there were two items at the sort of the system level that the board requested some more information on. So today's informational item is intended to do that and give you an opportunity to really delve deeper into these two really important components of our overall homeless system of care. The first is the Coordinated Access System. You've heard a lot about this from myself and from Lisa and from others. We have a lot more work to do, but we're really excited about sharing with you some of the data from the first year of full implementation. This is our system that creates a single, no wrong door for folks needing assistance, whether that be shelter, housing or anything in between. The second system-wide information that the SSF staff are going to share with you is around our community standards. There was quite a few questions during the RCHAP about these community standards, which are required by many of our funding streams, are our best practice and were adopted by the Continuum of Care Board last fall. And really they provide a framework and direction for those of us who fund direct services, whether that be outreach, shelter, housing, case management, et cetera, and provide some goals to strive towards, to get to more parity and consistency throughout our delivery of services. In addition to the information Sacramento Steps Forward is going to share, you'll see attached to your board letter, Attachment Four, which is a very high-level summary from my department of all of the contracts that we currently have underway that would be impacted by these community standards. And by and large, you'll see that most of our, our existing contracts or the contracts we're anticipating to enter into next fiscal year meet most of these standards. There's a few places or opportunities for growth, mostly around adding staff capacity so we can have additional services, longer times of services. But in general, we're feeling like our, our contracts are in good shape. We're meeting most of the standards and really intending to, as we continue to grow and expand our services, consider these standards. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter Bell and Lisa Bates from Sacramento Steps Forward, who will share quite a bit more.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. Lisa Bates with Sacramento Steps Forward. Just really quickly, before I turn it over to Peter Bell, our planning director, just want to reiterate that this is the first year of really a three-year ramp-up, of which we're in the second year. So we're looking back at the first year results. And as a reminder, the Coordinated Access System is really a mechanism. It's a vessel by which our community can connect thousands of people to services and assistance on a monthly basis. And you'll see some of that data in a few minutes. It has the potential to scale and flex as crisis and, and housing resources become available to the, to the community. It's also really providing you with baseline data that can now be regularly reported on and helps, you know, give us sort of the, the baseline by which we can continue to approve and adjust our response as a community. And we've, in the last year, worked really hard to bring over a dozen sheltering programs, thousands of slots of, of sheltering available to our community. We stood up a companion targeted prevention program, which you'll hear about, and have provided supplemental outreach capacity to complement the city and county partnership efforts to expand outreach to our community. We have a lot of planned improvements over the coming year to continue to scale and accelerate access to community services and supports. So we'll be starting with the Coordinated Access System, then I can come back up and give you an update on the standards as well. So just also want to say how appreciative we are of the board and the council in terms of making the investment in this Coordinated Access System and hopefully we can see the ongoing results of, of that investment. So with that, I'll ask that Peter Bell come up and give you an overview of the one-year results.
Thank you, Lisa, and good morning. My name is Peter Bell. I'm the Planning Director at Sacramento Steps Forward. Happy to talk with you all today about the inaugural year of the Coordinated Access All right, so just kind of starting out, in simple terms, the Coordinated Access System is the front door to homeless services in Sacramento. We really strive for sort of essentially five key values here within the Coordinated Access System, which is to prevent homelessness before it begins, to accelerate that time between contact and service, service support, therefore sort of minimizing the amount of time that folks have to wait to get connected to vital services. We want to streamline those resources and services within the system, essentially making it easier for people who are experiencing homelessness to access them. We want to optimize the resources that are within the system. So in simple terms, right, making sure that, you know, in this year, we're focusing on utilization. So making sure that beds and units are staying full as often as possible and ultimately really helping to be the backbone to forge that cohesive homeless system of care, right? All of us working together to make sure that we're not duplicating services, that we're targeting the resources in the right way and we're getting them to the people who need them as quickly as possible. In addition, you know, we're looking at things like having that centralized access point through 211 that folks can access by calling 211 and pressing eight. Having that service and resource coordination available to folks and ultimately having better data that we can then share out like we're doing today and learn more about where things can, can continue to be improved. So there are some key stats from 2023 that I want to highlight today. So we had over 37,000 callers that called into this line. They were connected to housing and homeless resources. On average, that median wait time was less than five minutes, which was really important for us, right? We didn't want folks to be waiting a long time when they're calling in. And we wanted to make sure that that resource, the 211 line, was available 24 hours a day, seven days a week and 365 days a year. So as of November of last year, the line officially began operations in that capacity. In addition, in terms of some positive outcomes, there was over 2,000 households that moved into housing during the year. And the median wait time from the time that someone was assessed to get into shelter enrollment was 10 days. And I will caveat that and say that that is not true for everybody necessarily as we're only meeting about 34% of the shelter demand currently. So for those folks who are getting into shelter, 34% of the shelter-seeking population, the wait time for them was 10 days. But that is not necessarily the experience that everybody has.
Okay, hold, hold on a second, Peter.
Yeah.
Supervisor. Thank you. Can you give me an example relative to the, the first number there, the 37,310 callers that were connected? What is, what constitutes a connection? Is it passing off a phone number? Is it a email? What, what is a connection?
Sure. So when folks are calling into the 211 Housing Crisis Line, which again, they're accessing by pressing eight, there are, there's a slew of resources that folks can be connected to depending on the circumstances. As you'll see in the next slide, 98% of folks are, you know, on either experiencing homelessness or on the verge of experiencing homelessness. So most of the resources that they're being connected to will include things that are mostly focused on housing. So it might be connections back to SHRA waitlist information. It might be information, you know, that about resources that are outside of the Coordinated Access System, as well as resources that are within the Coordinated Access System. So we do, if folks want to get connected to resources within the system, they do have to consent to have their information shared within the homeless management information system. They have to do an assessment process. The assessment is evaluated to determine what resources they're eligible for and then ultimately if they're able to be prioritized and connected to those resources through that system. So we have a lot more, I think, meaningful data about folks who go through the HMS pathway. But in terms of the 37,000 callers, you know, a good chunk of them are getting connected to resources outside of the system. And it's not just homeless and housing. It might be behavioral health. It might be things like employment support. So it's really whatever they're sort of exploring in that moment that's going to be helpful. 211 is a very good keeper of all of that information and they have very good processes to update that information on a regular basis. So they're, they're managing those sort of databases that they have that were, keeps all that information as well as navigating through these pathways through the Coordinated Access System.
I appreciate that. So what measures are, are in place to make sure that someone that, that calls and wants to be connected for, you know, could be behavioral health, could be shelter, could be a whole host of things. How do we ensure that they don't find themselves quickly in kind of a, you know, nebulous black hole and it's just a, you know, a number that's passed on and they get a recording and you kind of lose the moment where someone's not feeling kind of a warm handoff to, you know, an appropriate service provider?
Yeah, I mean, that is ultimately the goal of the system in many ways, is to try to create those, those warm handoffs to the receiving, you know, entity within our community. I will say, I think we achieve that better in some cases than elsewhere, right? I don't necessarily, you know, there are more relationships that are more well-established, you know, where especially within homeless service providers, where those warm handoffs are more likely to take place. But again, because there, you know, there's a greater demand on homeless services than we have the capacity to provide, not everyone is always going to get kind of that immediate next step to services. I will say, towards the end of this presentation, I talk a little bit about some of the next steps that we're seeking to accomplish. And one of those is, you know, what we, you're describing to some degree, which is sort of striking while the iron's hot, right? Like, how do we get someone when they're presenting at a front door who says, hey, I want services? How can we connect them to them today? And I'll say, some of the work that we're doing is because we have a better understanding now of sort of the spectrum of vulnerability in our community, we've been able to sort of analyze that and say, and forecast, I'll say, that we think we can start connecting, you know, the top 10%, most vulnerable people in our community to resources the same day that they present. And so this is a thing that we're actively working on in the background now to try to get stood up and bring additional resources into the system that haven't been available before, namely CalAim resources into the system in a way that we would be able to bolster up that resources that we can provide kind of in the moment to the, to our most vulnerable. In a perfect world, we'd be able to do it for everybody, but we're not at that situation. But it's something that we would like to look at over time is continuing to expand that type of approach because we know how important it is to connect people with the resources the day that they're requesting them.
Very good. Thank you.
I have one question, just because I don't want to mischaracterize what has been said or what's on this slide in public. So let me make sure I have it right. And I'm going to ask you to repeat again, your caveat on the 10-days medium time, median time. That's for those who actually did get shelter, but that was 34% of those who requested it? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So a little bit of demographic information about folks that are calling into the line. So as I mentioned, 98% of the callers are either experiencing or at, at risk of homelessness. We describe at risk of homelessness as being someone who's within 30 days of experiencing homelessness. The other 2% of callers are, have unstable housing, so they're, it's beyond 30 days. They're forecasting what some of that might look like. And just to say, 73% of those callers are experiencing homelessness tonight. So we looked at things specifically like essentially where folks are, you know, how they're accessing resources within the system, as well as some of the areas that folks are calling from. So I'll note that 72% of households are seeking shelter, are calling 211. So essentially, they're doing the majority of those shelter assessments within our system. 50% of all callers essentially originate from these top 10 highest volume zip codes, with the two highest zip codes being 95811 and 95823. So in 2023, we onboarded 541 shelter units into the system and 565 new permanent housing units into the system. One of the things that we looked at, as I mentioned earlier, was we compared shelter utilization for CAS participating shelters pre-Coordinated Access System, as well as those that were, the same shelters once they onboarded within the, within the Coordinated Access System or CAS. And we saw that in general shelters had higher utilization with CAS than before and an average utilization for 2023 was 93%. So 93% of shelter units were full on any given night. And in addition, we looked at things like outcomes, which I mentioned before, which is 2,000-plus households were exiting from CAS participating crisis resources to housing. So one of the things that we look at and folks often ask about is how many sort of shelter units are becoming available on any given week, right? So what is that capacity to bring in new folks look like? So we saw an average of 50 shelter units become available each week. And I'll note that not all referrals were successful on the first attempt. So on average, 73% of referrals resulted in an enrollment. The other 27% are missed because the client or household misses their intake appointment and a new client must be referred. The median time, as we mentioned before, was 10 days and over 2,000 households enrolled in shelter and 713 exited to permanent or temporary housing from those shelters. So another key strategy for us was really standing up that targeted prevention program. So this was a new area of focus for the Coordinated Access System. So one of the things that we looked at here was we were able to support 805 households with maintaining or requiring new housing with the majority not falling into homelessness. 85% remained housed after a year. So we looked at how successful, how sticky was this intervention over the course of that year after the resource was provided? And in total, over $2 million were spent in 2023 with the majority paying for things like security deposit, first month's rent and eviction avoidance. On average, I think the amount of assistance per household was around $3,500 per household.
Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize, I can't keep up with the acronyms. What is a PSAP?
Ah, thank you. So the, the PSAP is essentially the vessel or conduit for which we provide the homelessness prevention. So it's, it stands for a Problem-Solving Access Point. Essentially, what happens is we train community providers in the community with a learning that we call housing problem solving. It's essentially kind of like motivational interviewing, but what it does is it trains providers on how to have housing-focused case management conversations with folks. And in addition to completing that training, we provide them access with one-time financial assistance that they can use to rapidly exit or prevent households that they're engaging with from, you know, entering homelessness or, you know, rapidly getting out of it. So the financial assistance is something that SSF controls. They, those organizations request the funds from us. We can approve and then distribute them out into the community.
Thank you.
So we had in total 13 Problem-Solving Access Points in the last year and that's something we're continuing to, to grow and bring that resource more into the community. Okay, so one of the things that, last thing I wanted to talk about is just some of the planned improvements for the Coordinated Access System. So one of the things that we're looking at is bringing physical access points into the community. So we know 211 is a, you know, a phone-based access point is great, but not everybody always has access to a cell phone or can't keep it charged. So bringing physical access points, which can help augment some of the demand that we're seeing on the 211 system. In addition, as I mentioned before, a policy that we're working on, the Extremely Vulnerable Household Policy, which is really seeking to provide real-time referrals for the top 10% most vulnerable people experiencing homelessness. As I just mentioned, expanding access to one-time financial assistance to help rapidly exit and prevent folks from experiencing homelessness and continue to bring more resources and units into the Coordinated Access System to provide, expand the variety and number of resources that we can connect folks to. One of the main things that we're looking at is also bringing more case management support into the system because we're seeing that folks who have a dedicated case manager tend to be more successful in terms of some of those outcomes and their ability to connect to the resources within the system.
Excuse me, Peter. Supervisor. See, when you say um, you just will open it up for me.
I, I don't know how often you've been in front of this body, but we're, we've got a reputation for not allowing any presenter to get through without interrupting, so.
Very good.
This is actually a question for. So this is actually a question for Eric Jones. Earlier, we had an off-agenda speaker and group that were desperately trying to help someone with a, I guess, a pending eviction or an active eviction. And that, to me, is probably the most kind of classic, you know, clearly defined precipice of, you know, an individual or a family that is about to become homeless. Is there, and I assume our sheriff's department gets involved at times with evictions, but is there a way that either through the sheriff's department or other county agencies, we could, and maybe we do have as part of kind of a database, an ability to look for, proactively look for those instances where someone is within a week's time of being evicted so that we can actively get them resources so they get stabilized for a longer period of time? So steps forward and other agencies and service providers can, you know, work to, you know, make sure that that doesn't happen or that we can find them their next shelter opportunity?
Yes, Supervisor. So the sheriff's office is involved, and when there's a legal eviction, they go and do the enforcement part of that. But as far as tenants' rights and things like that, I believe Emily Halcon can provide some more detail around exactly what you're speaking to.
Okay.
Good morning. So we don't get direct data from the sheriff, as Mr. Jones said, but we do operate a couple of things and are doing some more work to lift up to you hopefully in a future session around tenants' rights. We do have the Renters' Helpline, which is a shared program throughout the county that provides legal assistance and referrals and tenancy supports for folks who are at risk of eviction or have other tenancy issues. We're also doing some more work around how other jurisdictions address these types of issues and looking to perhaps get a little more proactive in how we're working further upstream. That being said, and maybe Peter or Lisa can speak to this, those people are also already calling two-on-one regardless of CAS. And so that is a certain, and two-on-one serves as the front door as well for Renters' Helpline. So luckily, we have the exact same number sort of being called for those two things to parse out. But right now, our main resource, or at least financial resources, is through the Renters' Helpline, which is funded through the county as well as other partners in the community.
I just get very concerned when, you know, and maybe this is, you know, not the rule, but the exception, when someone feels that their last resort is to come to a Board of Supervisors meeting
Yes.
and look for help, it tells me something that perhaps, you know, getting in yet another line somewhere is just not going to work for someone that's going to lose their apartment, you know, within days or hours even. So I'm hopeful that we can think creatively about how to kind of intercept those cases where someone is just right at, you know, right at that point where their next step is they're going to be putting their stuff on the sidewalk.
Yeah, and I agree. And when I spoke with the lady who was here earlier, she didn't even know about those things. So part of it too is how do we get the word out? And I said, have you called two-on-one? Have you talked to legal services? And she hadn't. So myself or so she will connect with her, but I think part of it is knowledge in the community about where these resources are and how to access them.
And she was obviously a Spanish speaker.
Right.
So I'm hopeful in looking at you, Peter, and others, that everything that goes into the CAS system, as part of the CAS system, is provided multilingual.
Yes. Yes. Renters' Helpline isn't, positive CAS is too.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
And thank you. I was actually going to ask some questions about that very thing. So I appreciate Supervisor Serna bringing this up. You know, we had a discussion, I think it was last year, in the context of approaches Sacramento County takes to help do some upstream interventions for people to avoid them becoming homeless to begin with. And a lot of those discussions were about resources for people to assert their legal rights. I've had some discussions with our county council. Subsequent to that, I had some questions with county council and our chief administrative officer at the courts about Sacramento County's self-help program that's available to tenants. So I just want, I was going to ask you, Peter, I mean, what interface does CAS system two-on-one have with that program? And do you refer people to that program at Sacramento Superior Court?
I'd have to double-check on that. I'm not aware of a formal connection that's been established, but if it's a resource that's maintained and updated in two-on-one, it's definitely something that is probably available and discussed with folks in that situation. I will say, the thing that we look at is when folks do have evictions and they're calling into two-on-one and pressing eight, those are some of the folks that will get fast-tracked to those PSAP appointments. So those, we do accelerate and try to connect them to those resources. So the way two-on-one, they actually do schedules, so they'll schedule an appointment at one of those Problem-Solving Access Points. And in some cases, in extremely urgent situations, we do have additional staff that we can deploy to help support and accelerating that connection to resources to help prevent that eviction from taking place.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you, I mean, I think it might be worthwhile for, you know, Lisa, maybe to reach out to Lee Seal, learn more about the program, and maybe the courts can understand a little better about what the referral process is from us and understand maybe how that system can better address the needs of some people to prevent them from becoming homeless in the first place. And I would even go a step further, and I know this probably wouldn't come in the form of a referral for someone calling two-on-one because that's too late, but I don't know if Sacramento steps forward kind of as part of your efforts with CAS and two-on-one, if you ever have any interaction with our Sacramento DA's office, you know, they do a lot of educational programs with tenants, you know, Know Your Rights, because we have a lot of unscrupulous landlords in the county who take advantage of sometimes unsophisticated, uneducated, non-English-speaking tenants. And so there are a lot of programs out there. So I just want to make sure you're looking at that resource as well, Lisa.
Yes, thank you for those suggestions. I would be remiss to not bring up the Regionally Coordinated Homelessness Action Plan, in which one of the key actions in that plan that you adopted a few months ago is to build out that prevention framework and network. We have also been in conversations with legal services of Northern California about how can we better engage with the court system and with the data? So one thing we're seeking is that data because then that helps us be more strategic in terms of where we need to focus that prevention network framework. And so that is part of the work that is underway as part of your regional plan. So just wanted to share those bits of information as well. If there are no further questions on coordinated access, we could move to the community standards.
I see no more questions.
Okay. I would like to introduce to you all Ayana McGee, who is our Director of System Care Integration. She's been working the last year very closely with your county staff on CalAim integration. But she also handled for the last year the work around the development of the community standards with our national consultant. That was really a year-long effort of working with our community providers, working with the city and the county and SHRA to put together this required community standards that really help bring about more consistency and quality of care in your various programs, whether they be outreach, sheltering, rehousing, or housing. And so I'd like to have Ayana give you a quick overview, and then we can be available to answer any questions. And as just a reminder, we are coming back to you, as Emily said, with some additional information and outreach that we've done since you first heard about these standards in the spring of this year.
Hello. So as Lisa mentioned, we have done a lot of work around these community standards over the past year, year and a half. These standards are mandated by HUD to get us to consistency and equity in service access, quality, and outcomes for the homeless response system. Starting around January, February of last year, we embarked on the development of these standards in partnership with, of course, City of Sacramento, Sacramento County, and SHR Way. We brought in national experts to look at the standards and best practices of other communities in the nation, building on those existing local standards we have here in Sacramento, and then do additional background research, listening sessions, public comments, and overall synthesis of that work to prepare and revise several draft of the standards, which we landed on as a comprehensive version one. As you know, it's a 79-page document, and so we're doing a lot of work around implementation and helping our community to understand the purpose, why they're useful, and how they will get us to better outcomes for our community. The standards were approved by the COC Board in December of 2023 after this year-long process, after going through our COC committees and having engagement with our People Who Lived Expertise Committee in particular. And we did additional outreach after the last city council and county Board of Supervisors meeting a couple months ago, which we'll share a little bit more about shortly. In terms of performance, we've been talking about these community standards in terms of four components. And so thinking about performance, capacity building and training, contracts, integration, and ongoing continuous feedback. So on the performance front, the standards are a very important launching pad for a stronger... Oh, thank you. The standards are an important launching pad for stronger system performance evaluation. So our intent is to help program or help look at program KPIs such as length of stay, utilization, and successful outcomes across all of the programs. For example, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, shelter, et cetera. And so program performance reports will be published this summer with the aim of establishing baseline data that can help us get better at setting target outcomes over the course of the next year and beyond to help us as a system really think about how we're doing this work and is anyone better off? In terms of capacity building and training, SSF is very committed to providing guidance and leadership over system performance monitoring efforts as well as ongoing training and technical assistance over the course of the next several months to the next year to help programs align with the community standards. And so training opportunities will include, for example, orientations. So just to help folks get a wraparound what the community standards are and what they mean for their organizations, and then moving forward, helping them to actually think through opportunities like, okay, what it will look like to build out more robust, comprehensive training for their staff? What it would look like to update their program intake operations? And so we'll be building out that work over the course of the next year with forthcoming reporting and monitoring processes in parallel with that. We understand that many providers do not currently have sufficient funding, training, or capacity to meet these standards. And so these types of constraints will be accounted for as our local contract monitors begin to incorporate these standards into contracts, and will absolutely be accounted in terms of how we're thinking about building out that training. In terms of the most recent provider feedback that we've gotten, we reached out to eight providers focusing on smaller agencies that didn't have an opportunity to provide feedback over the course of the last year to make sure that there was an additional opportunity for those folks to be able to weigh in. We heard back from five agencies, and the feedback was generally positive and appreciative. Providers felt that the standards were important for establishing better quality services across programs and as a system, and they affirmed that the community standards are largely consistent with what's existing in contracts. And the concerns that were raised were things that we generally anticipated around funding and capacity. So for example, providers requested flexibility on program intake hours so that they can best serve their existing clients and handle that tension point of wanting to serve who they already have in-house the best they can before they take in additional clients. And so when they're looking at that intake hour standard, for example, for shelter, where it says Monday through Friday, at least four hours a day, and recommended on weekends, there were some programs who were like, we know we'd have to think about that in terms of our staffing capacity. And there's flexibility that the standards allow for to do that. Providers requested a structured implementation process with enough flexibility and ramp-up time to align with the standards, and so we're wanting to be really thoughtful about that as well. And as part of the implementation over the next several months, a year, again, we are going to be planning activities around orientation, around needs assessment, taking a look at the standards versus, you know, what's currently in place, and really doing a look at that gaps and seeing what are the competencies that providers of shelter or permanent supportive housing or what have you, what are those competencies that they need to do that work well and to do it equitably? And how can we support with building out training that'll wrap around and offer kind of a ramp and a lane for them to do that work in the best way? So that's my overview, and we're happy to take any questions.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and the work you do. I think the community standards are obviously extremely important. My question is kind of about, I mean, it's obviously related to them and how they're developed, and maybe it's more a discussion with Lisa. But yeah, I noticed, I think when this came up last time and since then, I've had some conversations about the formation of the COC Board, the board which is responsible for developing these community standards, correct, Lisa?
Yes.
That is the COC Board. And I noticed that there's no elected participation on the COC Board. And the reason I bring it up, and it comes up, it comes up often in kind of my CSAC travels, that we're one of the few, certainly the few larger counties, that does not have elected representation on the COC Board. And I think about this often in terms of kind of the RCHAP and how we're trying to have more of a formal, I guess, governance structure or at least working better together as a region. And I would certainly support at least exploring, maybe having some elected representation on that. And I would hate to ever ask a colleague to do something that I'm not willing to do myself, so I would be...
I consider that a volunteer.
Yeah, no, I knew you would. That's why I said I wanted to preempt that statement from you. But I would like maybe a discussion about that, about whether you think that might be worthwhile. And, you know, it's a way to formally bring, I think, some of these other jurisdictions to the table because we often, in some of our conversations with other cities in this county, we're educating them about what we're doing in Sacramento County. And some want us to establish a formal JPA. I'm not a supporter of that, but I think there's a lot of other things we can be doing short of that, and that might be a way to establish a little more formality in us working together. So not asking for, you know, a response right now, but I'd like to hear back maybe Shawna at some point and Lisa about how that might look and what your thoughts are about that.
Be happy to do that. And just a reminder, as sort of a bridge, we have the Sacramento Homelessness Policy Council.
Right.
Which has been good to bring the other cities in and to have the conversations, but it doesn't have the authority or the
Exactly.
decision-making that I think that you're kind of moving into.
I think this would dovetail with that nicely, actually.
Yeah, and maybe I can just add, Supervisor, that June 10th, we actually have a conversation scheduled with all of the jurisdictions, the county and all of our cities within our region and SSF to start to talk about what is a shared governance structure model that we could come back to the board with. And we do hope to elevate the policy council as one of those mechanisms where electeds can actually help to direct strategy around things like the community standards.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I agree. Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. I'll do my best to try and keep my comments brief because I got a lot rattling around up there. And, you know, I know that the work is obviously done in degrees behind the scene, but I think it's important to sort of go on record openly so that people listening or watching at home kind of can get a better picture of the landscape. So first of all, thank you, Lisa and Peter, for the work that you're doing and putting this all together, and Emily for helping shepherd that through the process. But, you know, and I did raise a little bit of a protest when we were adopting the RCHAP because it didn't have the community standards attached. I've since read 79 pages of that document, and there's a lot of good stuff in there relative to uniformity of provision of services, a lot of the things that go to protect staff and kind of make it a good working environment. And then there's a lot of things that I disagree with, but I know I disagree with them because I disagree with the overarching policy that mandates them. And so let me just state again for the record that I am not a proponent of Housing First policies. I think it could be cast as an abject failure, and to continue to double down on it, we are spending a tremendous amount of resources focusing on the hardest cases rather than, I think, trying to, you know, narrow the mouth of the funnel at the front end. And why I say that is because when we look at the spectrum of vulnerability that was brought up, I might couch vulnerability differently than Housing First policies do. And in that, I say that if we look at the chronically homeless that are most visible on the streets right outside of this building, you cannot deny the intersection of mental illness and substance use or addiction issues. And so that's no less of a humanitarian crisis, but oftentimes, those folks are actually resilient to their situation, whereas if you looked at vulnerability differently for someone who has just hit the streets because of whatever circumstances, and they're vulnerable... someone who has just hit the streets because of whatever circumstances, and they're vulnerable to getting deeper and deeper trapped into homelessness, and yet they are not prioritized for a lot of these services. And so I think if we can't bridge that gap and look at how do we, you know, recognize the needs of the intractable individuals and say, we'll come back for you, and focus on sort of the folks that can be mainstreamed maybe at an easier clip and making the resources, rather than going an inch wide and a mile deep, we actually really focus on where we can make some forward progress in a steady way. And then the other thing is that I, you know, in the coordinated access system, first of all, having an immediate repository that is easy for folks to be able to, as Supervisor sort of mentioned, to figure out and find out what is available for their particular circumstances, and so it's really the menu of what's being provided. But, you know, it was in one of the slides in the staff report, anticipated the beds that will be coming online relative to what the county is providing. And I think that it's important, to the extent that a lot of the things that I personally disagree with relative to housing-first policies, low barrier to entry, harm reduction, some of the other things that prioritize folks who are, have the hardest issues that are keeping them in homelessness and trying to get them into permanent supportive housing, I think there's a continuum, right, from there to there of other folks that could utilize and help. And so I think as we go forward with some of these beds coming online, that we, if there are constraints that come with the funding, purse strings, if you will, that we hold back some of those beds and so that we can prioritize maybe getting some of these other folks the help that they need in order to change the trajectory of their life. And so I admit that this is a vastly complex issue and that people are really working hard to do what they feel they can do with the tools that they're given, and I'm just suggesting we put a little, a couple of different tools in the toolbox. Thank you.
I just wanted to respond. Thank you, Supervisor Hume. I think our vision or our desire is that we have a solution for everyone, right? And so a lot of what we talked about was the prevention framework, is trying to capture people before they need that much more intensive or additional support services. The other thing that probably is not coming out very clearly, and perhaps sometime later in the fall, we can bring back when we update our gaps analysis, is every year we're trying to provide you with some information about how many people in our community need prevention, how many people just need rapid rehousing. And the county's done a great job of expanding the rapid rehousing slots through the MHSA program, which we don't talk a lot about, but that's also that resource that is maybe, you know, three to six months' worth of assistance to get yourself back up and on your feet again. So we're trying to both review, you know, who is coming in the front door and what levels of vulnerability, and we can define that many different ways, but what services do they ultimately need, and then what are the best interventions? And so being able to bring back to you some updated information around prevention, resources for those that are at risk or about to fall into homelessness, rehousing for those that maybe just need, you know, six months to a year to get back on their feet, and then who needs the more intensive, deeper housing with more extensive services. So be happy to share some of that and inform your conversations. Thanks.
Supervisor Hume, could I just get clarification on what you said for a simpler mind than yours? Is, because it is, I mean, much of what you said is actually very accurate in that we don't set all the rules, we have to work with them, that we're missing quite often the lower-hanging fruit because we're so uber-focused on that fruit which is at the top of the tree. I mean, is that, I mean, we're not getting people off of the street that we probably could house in a more cost-effective and, for lack of a better way, easier way, because we focus so much on those that are the hardest cases.
That is a completely different analogy, but yes, that is essentially what I'm saying, is that if you have two people and one person tells you, no, I don't want help, and the other person says, yes, I do want help, we should focus on the person that says, yes, I do want help first.
Okay.
No, there's logic to that.
I just wanted to get clarification. Thank you. Any other Board members? Do we have any member of the public?
We do not have any comments for this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the good work with staff on that. Next item, please.
For item 42, this is the approval of the Mental Health Services Act, fiscal year 2425 and 2526, two-year program and expenditure plan.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director, and I have a PowerPoint that I'd like to show you in my preface. Let's start off and just acknowledge that we do recognize that Proposition 1 did pass, and so we are going to see some very significant changes happening to MHSA. The implementation for Proposition 1 is in regulation for July 1, 2026, which is over two years from now. The regulation actually includes when we're supposed to start planning for it, and it doesn't indicate that we should start planning for it before January 1, 2025. We are currently waiting on further clarification from the state regarding a number of the technical details of the implementation. The bill went through legislature very quickly, and there was an acknowledgement that it did not provide all the answers that were needed in order to implement the new changes, and directed DHCS, the Department of Healthcare Services, to provide additional guidance in preparation for that implementation. So we're still working with the state as well as waiting on further clarification. So in the meanwhile, we still need to continue moving forward with what is in regulation regarding our Mental Health Services Act. And so we'll be doing our plan update this year, right now, for the fiscal year 2024-25 as well as 2526, and then you'll hear from me one more time on MHSA around this time next year for our final MHSA plan update. So backing up to what's currently going on, so for Mental Health Services Act, this was originally put into law through Proposition 63, voter initiative, which applied a 1% income tax on individuals who are millionaires, anybody who made $1 million or more. And the funding was dedicated towards mental health services and had some very specific both values as well as funding requirements in terms of how we were to use those funds. The overall general standards are a focus and value on wellness, recovery, resilience, cultural competence, client-driven behavioral health system, a family-driven behavioral health system, integrated service experience, and community collaboration. We are very proud of our MHSA steering committee, which has been involved from the very beginning in terms of helping guide the county in developing our plan. So I already, we're actually going to ask for you to approve this fiscal year plan for fiscal year 2425 and 2526. So some highlights for you in terms of what work is being accomplished through our MHSA plan. We have our largest bucket, Community Services and Supports component, which includes our General System Development Programs as well as our Full Service Partnership Programs. In our General System Development Programs, we served 23,600 folks within the fiscal year, and our Full Service Partnership Program served almost 2,700 folks. And from our Full Service Partnership Programs, we see some great outcomes around improving stable housing, reduction in the number of homeless days, reduction in ER visits, reduction in psychiatric hospitalizations, reduction in arrests and incarcerations, as well as for those who have goals around employment, we do see improvement in terms of their employment. Our, yeah.
Thank you. My question on that slide is not so much the numbers as it is how we arrived at these numbers. I know in the past, we've had a lot of difficulty getting data, accurate data, out of our health partners and others, and a lot of these numbers are highly reliant on the data that we get from, let's say, our health partners, like the ER visits, psychiatric hospitalizations, and so forth. Are we getting better data now? Is, has it improved the data process or gathering process so that we can come up with these numbers?
These particular outcomes are based on the service provider's connection with the individual, so they ask them what happened to them in the 12 months before they were involved in the program, and then track them from that point forward in terms of what events happened in their lives.
Got it.
Following that. And so we're not dependent on our health partners for those.
But are we utilizing data from our health partners?
We are currently working on a statewide initiative with DHCS in order to get access to those data from our ERs. Long story short, for behavioral health, emergency stays, ERs, bill-managed care plans for Medi-Cal beneficiaries, and so the managed care plans send their data to DHCS, and then we're now trying to get access to that information through both our managed care plans as well as through the state. It's currently not real-time data, but we are getting better access to data from our emergency rooms.
Okay, that's important. Thank you.
On our prevention early intervention component, we serve over 73,000 individuals and outreach to over 284,000 individuals. Our Strengthening Families Program serve 4,800 individuals and provide training and information to over 17,000 students, educators, parents, and other stakeholders. And then our Health and Wellness Programs have served over 800 individuals and outreach to over 500. And then we have our promotion program, Mental Health Promotion Program, reaching thousands of residents through our multimedia outreach initiatives. We also have a workforce education and training component. It is, has a number of different initiatives focusing on everything from working with peers, to working with high schools, to developing psychiatric residents and fellowships, and a number of other areas that we, one of the most notable is that we did participate in a statewide initiative that was a loan forgiveness program, that we had a number of service providers within our, within our community that were able to apply for and be able to have their student loans reduced in exchange for commitment to continue to do the work within community behavioral health. We also have our innovation components. These are new things that we are bringing to the community, and this is very much done collaboratively with our community in terms of developing what initiatives we're going to fund under our innovation component. The most notable and current innovation projects are Community Justice Support Program, which was implemented in 2122, and working on, focusing on increasing mental health services to those who are justice-involved. We have a newer innovation program that we're working on getting stood up called the Alcove Program, which is a youth drop-in center for individuals 12 to 25. And then most recently, we also have our Community Defined Mental Health Wellness Practices for African-American, Black, African descent unhoused populations, which we're currently working on getting stood up. There is also a technological component which really focuses on object, meaningful use within our electronic health record and making sure that we're able to access the right information in order to support our consumers. And then over the past few years, behavioral health has been increasing our investments to support individuals with behavioral health challenges. We have investments in housing, flexible housing supports, and services for individuals experiencing or at risk of homelessness. In terms of our portfolio, we currently have 401 units dedicated to MHSA tenants and 208 additional units that are forthcoming. So this has been a growing area of focus for us. So the process is, we currently are focusing on fiscal year 2425 and 2526. We posted the draft plan for 30 days. It was then taken before our Mental Health Board, who held a public hearing at the close of the public comment period. We then had our team update the report, including public comment and, including the input that was received, as well as noting any changes to the plan. And then finally, here we are today, bringing it before you as the Board of Supervisors for your approval. And have been, we have been asked to add in some additional information regarding where we see the greatest challenges and barriers by individuals as part of that public comment period. They suggested we need to include some of this information, and so we're happy to do that. When we talk to both consumers as well as our service providers, we hear that housing is the number-one top challenge. A lack of affordable housing continues to be number one. In terms of staffing shortages, they continue. I'd say probably want to call that a staffing crisis in terms of service providers that are available in order to do this important work. And then finally, in terms of cultural responsive services, we do have still a little bit of a mismatch between our workforce and those that they're serving. And so we continue to really put a lot of emphasis and focus on how we can continue to improve the cultural relevance of our, the services that we deliver. We do that both at the county level as well as support our providers in developing their capacity to provide services to our culturally diverse communities here in Sacramento County. We've been asked to also include success stories along the way, so I did include two quick success stories here for you. This first one is an individual that was served by our ARISE Full Service Partnership Program. This individual was a 30-year-old female who was referred to ARISE in April 2022. At the time of the admission, she had been hospitalized at a local psychiatric health facility with high-risk behaviors, chronic homelessness, and difficulty managing her mental health symptoms. With the use of MHSA Flex Funds, which are housing Flex Funds, ARISE was able to support the member with finding initial stability, including food, clothing, hygiene products, and housing placement at a room and board, and this allowed the member to work towards her longer-term goals of housing. And since then, she's moved into a permanent supportive housing unit and is now able to focus on her independent living skills and long-term goals, such as developing her family relationships and continuing her passion for cooking. This second success story is actually written in the first person, so it's actually submitted by an individual who received our services, and this individual says, "A year ago, due to the war in Ukraine, my son and I decided to move to the U.S. We found ourselves in the middle of a new country, a new culture, a new language, and without work, and at first, out of necessity, we lived with relatives, and it was very difficult to find housing and even more difficult to find work." All of these factors, all of these factors, difficulties, and experiences resulted in chronic stress, which then began to affect mental health and physical state. Says, "My 15-year-old son found it very difficult to adapt to this new life, and as a result, lost interest in studying and began to refuse and attend school. And although in Ukraine, he studied well and played sports. And due to all this, suffered a lot of, a lot and developed depression." This individual says, "I no longer saw any way out of our situation, so one day, I was driving in a car and heard an announcement from the Slavic Assistance Center that stated something along the lines of, if you're experiencing difficulties in life, if you're lonely or depressed, remember that you are not alone and call our center and we'll try to help you." And so the individual called immediately and was given an appointment for the next day. Mental health specialists referred to a bilingual psychologist, shared various important resources for refugees from Ukraine, and helped this individual find a charter school that had children from the Slavic community where the son could find friends. And we'd like to acknowledge and appreciate our Supporting Community Connections Program called Hope for the Future, and this is an example of the type of experience and success that an individual receiving services from that program was able to achieve. And so today, we're here to ask for your approval in order to continue this work for this coming fiscal year.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for the presentation and the great work that you're doing. Obviously, a lot of great programs. I especially appreciate those couple little anecdotes of success stories. So ARISE is, again, one of our contract providers with the FSB through the FSB program?
It is. It's operated by Telecare.
Okay. That's great. And I'd also like that you focused on one involving, you know, our refugee community because I think those ongoing behavioral health supports for those communities, of which we have very large refugee communities in Sacramento County, are extremely important to continue. large refugee communities in Sacramento County, are extremely important to continue those. So I tried not to interrupt you during the presentation because I had questions on a bunch of different areas. I wanted to let you finish, but I, then I risk forgetting what I wanted, what I wanted to ask you about. So on the FSP, the successes we're seeing, I mean, that, that's a game changer. That is great data. And just so I'm, I'm clear, these are people just, that, that was data for the last 12 months preceding, the 12 months of enrollment in F, as in, in the FSP program. I keep looking at Siobhan. I guess I could just look at you. Is that correct?
Right. So they, we, we look at the 12 months before they enroll in the program and then we follow them after they're enrolled with the program and make comparisons to those two time periods and see what sort of improvements.
And during that 12 months, how many people that were initially enrolled fell out of the program? Do you have a sense or did they all pretty much stay in?
I don't have that data off the top of my head. I think it is a mixed bag. I think that there are individuals that are able to stick with the program and I think there are some, we even see people that need to move due to other life situations. I don't have the data right off the top of my head.
And I, and I just want to mention that FSP program was really instrumental in us helping, you know, like get over the, get over the finish line with our city-county partnership because it really was a huge resource we were able to provide in support of a lot of those suffering on our, on our streets and open spaces here. When it comes to the Prop 1 and the impact on Prop 1, this will be our last MHSA two-year expenditure plan, right? It'll become a, what will it become a Prop 1 expenditure plan?
So we'll, we'll hear this year with the two-year plan. We will need to do a plan update next year at the same time.
Okay.
So you'll hear from me one more time on MHSA and then beginning, shortly after the beginning of 2025, we'll begin the planning process. We've already heard from DHCS, they don't anticipate to send out any secondary guidance until sometime in 2025, so I don't know where it will be in 2025 that we actually start that planning process. But then eventually, we'll develop a plan as a result of the secondary guidance and the feedback that we hear from our community around their priorities and focuses. And then we'll come before the board to present what, what the plan is based on that feedback.
Okay. And then Prop 1 will become, will that also be on the same kind of cycle? Once it's, takes effect, it'll be every, a two-year plan, same kind of?
It's a three-year plan.
That'll be a three-year.
This, this particular year was off because of the pandemic. We had a reprieve for one year that we didn't have to redo. So now the state asks us to get back on the right clock, so two years, like two-year plan instead of a three-year plan. But the new Prop 1 BHSA, Behavioral Health Services Act, will be on three-year plan cycle.
Okay. And I'll be very interested to hear, you know, the impacts from Prop 1 because I know it has some, it will have some limitations or specific direction on how we can spend that money. And I imagine it's going to impact some of these programs that you highlighted here today. And, and kind of last but not least, I know you had this specific slide on homelessness and the number of people specifically who were unsheltered, who were, who we assist with our housing supports, MHSA housing supports, but that certainly, that does not tell the whole story. I mean, awful lot of the clients that are served through these programs are, are experiencing homelessness. Do you, can you, is there a way to, can you break that down? I'm not asking to do it right now, but can you give us a sense of that? How, what, what percentage of the, of the clients that we serve with these MHSA dollars are, are unsheltered?
And we are planning on that for our next update.
Okay.
As a part of the city-county partnership agreement.
Great.
The one other thing I do want to mention, thank you for that emphasis on the importance of these services to serving the unhoused. I want to also add that if you have a serious mental illness and you're untreated, you are at risk of being unhoused. So everybody in our programs are, we're impacting homelessness by serving everybody in our programs.
Great. And that's, thank you for saying that because I think, and Siobhan, Emily's not here, they've heard me, you mentioned this many times, we, we cannot talk about our housing, our continuum of care without also talking about all the supports that we provide and are, and need to be providing on the behavioral health side as well. Sometimes it just kind of gets lost in the discussion a little bit, but it's, in my opinion, equally, you know, important. And then the last thing is, is obviously, we, we talk a lot about providing us with tools to be able to push out, you know, to our constituents. So I would hope maybe there will be something following this. I mean, I'm certainly supportive of the two-year plan, something you could provide to us that we can really push out to the community to help educate them about a lot of your amazing prevention intervention programs that we're providing. So, thank you.
Can I also add Supervisor Desmond, is, there's often a characterization that the only way to get housing supports, navigation and supports is through our FSP programs, and that's not accurate. It really is through all of our outpatient programs and behavioral health. They do assess people for housing needs and they do link them appropriately to services. And in often cases, there are resources to serve them as well. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. SuRaz Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask this question offline because it may be an obtuse question, but why did it change the name from Mental Health Services Act to Behavioral Health Services Act?
Behavioral Health represents both mental health and substance use disorder services.
Okay.
So they are purposefully trying to further integrate mental health and substance use disorder all in, under the larger umbrella of behavioral health.
Thank you.
It's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
I see nothing else from the board. I believe we do have, are you through?
I am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it and the work that went into it. I believe we do have a public comment.
Okay. Keon.
I appreciate the work that Behavioral Health Services is doing and with the resources that it has. I think that we, as many people in the community have long been demanding, greater investment in community, life-affirming, community care services over law enforcement in the carceral system. I just had a question around when it comes to the issue of staffing, which is, how many behavioral health peer specialists are currently employed in behavioral health services? The mental health workers as well and social workers? I'm curious to know what the staffing vacancy is, the vacancy rate is right now, given the potentially reduced funding that we're going to be receiving after Prop 1 was passed or whatnot. But just wanting to note that as it's listed currently on the county's website, behavioral health service specialist, peer specialist currently is hiring at a salary range between $44,000 and $49,000. And mental health workers, unlicensed and licensed, make a range between $50,000 to We're a county that has over $8.8 billion in resources and we can afford to increase and actually pay our mental health service workers who we depend upon to address some of the more urgent needs of the most vulnerable community members among us, as we claim to care about. But we don't actually pay them what they're worth in that, like, within this range. And we could increase that if we simply cut back on even vacant positions that are in the sheriff's department, which I'm also curious to know about. How many vacancies actually exist within the sheriff's department that offers deputy sheriffs a starting salary between $89,000 and $119,000? Based on just the count of how much we make, or how much we're paying the sheriff right now, if we were to cut two sheriff's deputy positions, which make an average of about $202,000, we could easily cover dozens of mental health service workers, behavioral health service staffing and actually attract more higher.
Keon, can you wrap up your comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes your comments for this item.
Thank you for Deputy County Executive Katariya. I would assume that you have some of that data, but you probably need follow-up opportunity.
Yes, I will follow up. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That's all of the public comment at this point. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Supervisor Desmond, second from Supervisor Hume. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you for all the good work. Next item, please.
Okay. Item 43 is AB 481 Military Equipment Annual Report and Presentation of Regional Parks.
Sorry, a little bit shorter. Good morning again. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks, and we are here for our annual reporting on AB 481. Well, consistent with AB 481 because per the letter of the law, Sacramento Regional Parks doesn't actually have a requirement to report out on this. However, we feel that it is important for the transparency of our agency. So from our report last year, we haven't had a significant change in our military equipment inventory, other than we have received an additional 400 rounds of not, or less-than-lethal beanbag munitions. And everything else has remained the same. And I just wanted to go over, let you know that we did have a public meeting of our Recreation and Park Commission for public comment. We did not receive any. That occurred May 23 of this year. And we've had the following deployments using our military equipment. In March of 2023, our unmanned aircraft system, our drone, was used to help us evaluate the flood impact and litter and debris. In June, it was used to assist in an arrest. In March of 2024, it helped us locate a missing person. And in March and April of 2024, on three occasions, we have used it to take some aerial photography of the American River Parkway, again, to help us look at any debris response needed. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the effort for transparency. SuRaz Serna.
Thanks. Liz, before you leave there. So why, why, it seems to me that drones or, you know, those devices that you could, you know, buy at Best Buy these days in terms of just doing aerial photography, why is, is it, why is it considered military equipment?
I don't know that I can answer that question. I don't know if Mr. Jones has a better response to that.
Yes. Deputy County Executive Eric Jones for Public Safety and Justice Agency. So per the requirements in Assembly Bill 481, there are a, a number of pieces of equipment that the various law enforcement agencies you'll hear from today have to report on. And I believe the spirit of the bill is that the equipment, although available commercially by anybody, the original design of much of the equipment was for original military purpose, although a lot of the equipment is available today, you know, by any consumer.
Well, okay, I guess you can then extend that out to the nth degree and say almost any part of our modern technology is military equipment, since most of it has been developed, or a lot of it's been developed by the military originally, right?
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none for the board, do we have any public comment on this?
We do. We have a couple of public comments.
Okay.
And our first person is Britt.
I'm here today. I'm actually the daughter of two retired Sacramento sheriffs. My father was a lieutenant and my mom was a deputy. Before that, she was a 911 dispatcher. So when I was a kid, I did Take Your Kid to Work Day and listened to 911 calls, which I don't think they could do that anymore, but it was the 90s. And so I'm speaking here today with the values that they instilled in me for integrity and justice. And so I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to take a deeper look at this military equipment policy to ensure compliance with the AB 481. I think like saying the meeting was May 23 and there was no comment, I mean, if you bring up anything to people, even if it's like your favorite cereal, you're going to have comment. And this is over the use of military equipment. And even just say for like the drones, that is surveillance. And I don't know if you guys have seen that Black Mirror episode, but it is pretty frightening of that escalation of what potentially. So I feel like we're right here at a point of steering the ship away from continued escalation. Military equipment means our civilians, it's, it's war on our soil, which even if it's not just for the constituent safety, even for the safety of officers, as we see dissent continue with inflation and cost, there will be dissent and increasing this surveillance of people and military use will only cause more violence and, and pain for everybody. And so this money could be used into say like behavioral health or trauma-informed therapists as part of a branch. So I feel like we're really at a pivotal point here. And also, not only that, but just take a deeper look at what the AB 481 compliance of saying this, I think it was revealed last week that sharing this publicly was just on their website, like, and there's no comment. It doesn't feel like there's actual engagement with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Keon.
It's nice to see a Black Mirror fan in the audience. Thank you.
One with valuable lessons we should all take to heart. Just for the record, as a former military service member, it was rightly pointed out that every piece of this equipment was designed of, by, and for military purposes. And I just want to note that it is a red herring dripping with paternalism to claim that this equipment is anything less than military-grade, especially considering that the thousand, like the tens of thousands of dollars that some of these drones are worth actually aren't available as commercially as we like to say, say that they are. But just to comment and lift up what the previous speaker just said, which was the, if there was a meeting on April 23, it was not publicly, it was not well-publicized or conveniently located as AB 41 requires, which states a well-publicized and conveniently located community engagement meeting within 30 days of publishing its report. If they did this at a public commission meeting, not only was like, was it not well-publicized, as in where was the, was there a press release? Were there any social media posts to invite members of the community to participate in this? Or were there any emails to let them know that this conversation was happening? The county building with the secure, like, with the security screening that was only erected in the last two years is not also a conveniently accessible location. It also doesn't allow meaningful community engagement based on the rules and regulations of county commissions and this board chamber, which the AB 41 requires that this be a meaningful engagement that the general, so the general public may discuss and ask questions regarding the annual military equipment report and how the, how the park rangers funds, purchases, and uses this equipment. And just to note as well, even though it's not legally required, I find it deeply troubling that we empower our park rangers to make arrests and use force, as well as use firearms and weapons and equipment, when most people would assume that park, like the parks department is really there to maintain the, the, the actual parks, the land, and not actually inflict harm or violence on community members.
Can you wrap up, Keon, can you wrap up, please? Thank you.
That concludes your comments for item 43.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So a question for County Council. So the last speaker made mention of, in his opinion, there not being adequate public access or public, or invitation for, invitation for public participation. Have we, what, have we satisfied the spirit and intent of the law as it was cited?
I don't know exactly what was publicized and how it was publicized, but we've been doing this for several years now and we've never had a complaint. So I will have to defer to Liz and her staff as to exactly what they did and then I can opine as I think.
And/or Mr. Jones, right?
As, as the speaker noted, the, the language in the bill is quite broad.
For our Recreation and Park Commission meetings, our agendas are published on our website. We also have an email notification system that you can sign up for so that you will receive notification of our meeting, our meetings, and they are located at our Parks Office off of Rockingham Drive.
And I assume, Ms. Travis, that that in itself satisfies not just this legislation relative to military equipment updates, but also Brown Act and public noticing laws?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I see no more board members punching in and.
I see no more board members punching in and no more members of the public have asked to address at this time. So next item.
Okay, item 44 is the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, 2024 Annual Military Equipment Report.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Tiffany King. I'm the, I'm getting feedback. Sorry. My name is Tiffany King. I'm the Assistant Chief Investigator with the DA's office. On July 11, 2023, the Board adopted Ordinance Number 1599, which approved the District Attorney's Military Equipment Use Policy. Government Code 7072 requires any agency who receives such approval to submit an annual report to the Board of Supervisors. The annual report is to detail the use, annual cost, inventory, intended future purchases of additional equipment, and any complaints or concerns submitted by the public related to the use of our equipment. The DA's military equipment inventory consists of six less lethal beanbag launchers and their associated munitions. Our equipment was not deployed in the line of duty, other than during training of law enforcement personnel. On August 8, 2023, District Attorney Criminal Investigators received training and qualified in the use of the equipment, which included review of our use of force policies, deployment considerations, alternative tactics, including de-escalation, and post-deployment care. On May 16, we held a, this year, sorry, 2024, we held a community engagement meeting to provide the public an opportunity to discuss and ask questions about the annual military equipment report. There was no public comment received. In addition, there have been no complaints or concerns submitted to our office. The total annual cost for maintenance of the equipment and replenishment of ammunition that was used in training was $2,115. In the upcoming fiscal year, we do not intend to purchase any new equipment besides replacing ammunition that will be used in training and qualifications. Our military equipment policy, our inventory, and the 2024 annual report have been posted on the DA's website and will remain there for as long as the equipment is in use. Thank you, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. King. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So if I heard you correctly, you mentioned that the DA's office is in possession and can use at their discretion beanbag rounds.
Yes.
So, and you mentioned that they were not deployed, correct?
Correct.
So that can mean two different things, right? That can mean, I mean, beanbag deployment in some instances may be preferable to what it's intended to be, which is non-lethal. So does that mean that there were instances, and I'll have the same question for the Sheriff's Department, does that mean if the beanbag rounds were not deployed, other greater than non-lethal or lethal weaponry was deployed?
No, we didn't have any incidents or any use of force required.
I think it's important to make that clear because otherwise you kind of leave open the fact that non-lethal was actually utilized. And I would argue that in some instances that that is going to be the preferred deployment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
We do. We have one public comment. Keon.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Again, a community engagement meeting, even if it is broad in its language, there is clear spirit and intent with the law, which is stated clearly in the legislature's preamble of AB 481, which was to limit and provide transparency around the military equipment deployed, given its disproportionate use and oftentimes traumatic experience, like experience that comes with just mere sight of military equipment to be deployed. It would provide that, I would ask, and be worthwhile asking questions of these law enforcement agencies, how they actually publicized this meeting. If they just did it through an opt-in system that the county uses that is buried among dozens of pages of its website when it comes to its respective commissions, that is not well-publicized. That is not conveniently accessible, like, to the vast majority of people, especially those of us who don't have reliable access to internet, which many people in the rural county are currently struggling with, as you all are well aware. But to the point too, around the total annual cost for this equipment, I mean, the fact that the DA hasn't used any of this equipment, but maintains it at 2,000, like, you know, $2,000 a year or whatnot, it's worth asking the question, why do we even have it in the first place? I mean, there's, they work very closely with the Sheriff's Department, and there is a mutual aid system across this county that allows them to call in other agencies for equipment that they don't, like, that they may not have access to. So rather than maintaining this equipment, why are we not just selling this equipment back to the federal government or to another agencies that actually need, like, that actually, so that we can actually save up money and divert those resources elsewhere? I don't see what the point is of having the DA or the parks, besides maybe, maybe drones, of having access to this equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
That concludes your public comments for this item.
All right. Next item, please.
All right. Okay, next we have the Receive and File the Sacramento Sheriff's Office Annual Military Equipment Use Report for 2024, Authorization for Continued Use of Military Equipment and amend the inventory as changes occur, and Authorization to Purchase and Acquire Military Equipment in the Future in accordance with Military Equipment Policy.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is David Beckwar. I'm a captain with Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, and I'm in command of the Special Operations Division. I'm here to present on behalf of Sheriff Jim Cooper. I'm pleased to be here before you. And before we get into the PowerPoint presentation, we would like to start with a brief video presentation.
I'm going to ask Metro Cable to cue up the video.
All right. Thank you. We'll go right into the PowerPoint presentation for Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, 2024 AB 481 Inventory Review. I'll preface by saying the vast majority of the inventory that we're here to talk about and discuss is a renewal application for use, what was brought in before you last year. And there's a bit at the end about new inventory requests. Unmanned aerial systems. Current inventory is 44 drone systems. They're all relatively similar in function. We use them for search and rescue operations, high-risk operations, and community outreach. The difference between our drones, namely, is battery life, some of the technology, quality of picture, the ability for two-way communications, and to carry and deliver payload. Robots. We have an inventory of nine robots, and they're used to remotely gain video and audio data, deliver items, disrupt suspicious packages, and clear buildings. When we talk about the disruption of suspicious packages, we're talking about the Explosive Ordnance Detail or Bomb Squad. Armored vehicles. We have two Lenko Bearcats that were represented in the video preceded the PowerPoint. We also have same thing, one Rook, which is a Caterpillar tractor system. A difference between that, which you can rent from a rental company up the street, and what we have is that ours has armor capability to keep people safe. They're used to keep the public and officers safe, search and rescue during natural disasters or high-risk incidents, namely evacuations of innocent parties to get them out of dangerous High-mobility multipurpose wheeled vehicles. We have one five-ton truck outfitted with a dump bed to carry equipment. Two General Humvees or Hummers used for community outreach. Those are the vehicles that are painted all white with the Use Services for the Sheriff's Office. They're not used for operational needs. Mobile Incident Command. We have one mobile booking command trailer, which is a big box trailer that's pulled behind a big rig cab. And we have one Nomad Tactical Communications Vehicle, which are used in large protected events so that tactical dispatchers have a area to operate and help coordinate major high-risk incidents from on scene. Long-range acoustical devices, or LRAD, we have five of those devices. Three of them are used at Folsom Dam to cover a large area there, and two are housed with our SWAT team at Special Operations. Those devices are able to channel and funnel sound effectively over great distance in a narrow field, so we can communicate people from a great distance effectively. You can be heard. Less lethal launchers, shotguns, and rounds. We have a multitude of those. 69 launcher platforms, which include the 37 and 40 millimeter. And they utilize a number of different rounds, sponge, impact, and chem agents. And we have 588 of those less lethal shotguns that utilize beanbag rounds as a de-escalation tool. Worthy of note, we, as an organization, no longer use the shotgun as a lethal tool platform. They've all been converted to less lethal devices, as illustrated here at the bottom of the PowerPoint. Diversionary devices. We have 480 mini flashbang diversionary devices for use during high-risk incidents by specialized trained personnel, as well as 50 aerial flashbang diversionary devices for same purpose. Rifles and ammunition. We have 24 308 caliber rifles. Those are used by specialized, specially-trained personnel. Two 9-millimeter MP5s. We have 650 223 caliber rifles of varying barrel lengths. Most of those are deployed throughout field services. That would be the patrol rifle. And we have one 50 caliber rifle that is maintained and used by our SWAT team. And we have the associated ammunition to go with each of these platforms. Explosive breaching tools. We possess 750 feet of detonating cord and 50 blasting caps, and this is for exclusive use by our highly-trained Explosive Ordnance Detail team. Lengthy slide that quantifies the pepperball launchers and chemical agents that we have. There's various delivery methods. Some of them are aerosol. Some of them utilize a powder dispersment, and some of them use a incendiary or hot type of burn to disperse chemical agents by way of smoke vapor. And this is the part of the presentation where we are going to talk about new pieces of equipment that we do not currently have in our inventory that we are seeking for use. This first one here is known as the VTOL, or Vertical Takeoff and Landing Fixed-Wing Drone Device. And the request is for two. The unique nature of these drones and their effectiveness is that they have the same capability as our normal drones, which is that vertical takeoff and landing, but outside of the vertical takeoff and landing, it transitions to forward flight like any airplane would, which uses considerably less battery to keep it in the air, which allows us longer-term operations. In this instance, approximately two hours of flight time, whereas a normal UAS drone has approximately 20 minutes of useful time before it needs to return and either have a battery change or it needs to be swapped with another drone. The cost for this drone is listed in the written report. I apologize for not having it up here. This is a different version of the PowerPoint. We updated it with some of the concerns that were expressed at CRC. So, but the funds for the purchase of these two drones is state grant, so it's outside the Sheriff's Department. This is the DJI Matrice 30T. This is already in existence and use with the Sacramento Sheriff's Office. This is a request to add three additional units not currently in the inventory, and therefore use for and by the Ranch Court of a Police Department and their city. All right, these are launcher platforms that are very similar in nature to equipment that we already have in the inventory. The request here is for use for training and testing within our organization to see if we want to transition some of the platforms that we have to a little bit newer technology, but relatively the same characteristics and abilities. The first being a Penn Arms Tactical Single Shot 40-millimeter Less-Lethal Launcher. The next being a Penn Arms Collapsible Stock 40-millimeter Multi-Use Launcher. Then the Genesis Arms Less-Lethal Shotgun, again, for, to conduct trials and evaluation to determine its suitability for use in a more broad sense in the organization. Lastly, on this page, the CTS 40-millimeter Aerial Flashbang Distraction Device. And that is essentially a bright light and a loud acoustical sound.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, with regard to the third item there, the Genesis Arms Less Than Lethal Shotgun. So that's a, that's a shotgun that is designed and manufactured specifically just for beanbag deployment versus what I think I heard you say before, which was- versus what I think I heard you say before, which was the existing stock of shotguns have been converted for beanbag deployment. So would this be kind of the next era of using that type of implement?
That's correct.
Okay. And what is, I'm just curious, besides the difference in the round, a lethal shotgun shell full of pellets, buckshot, what have you, versus a beanbag, what's the difference in the gun itself?
My understanding, and I don't want to make, I don't want to say, speak out of turn or give incorrect information, Jack, so if I do, please come up here and tell me that I'm wrong. But my understanding is that the internal components are designed to hopefully prevent the use of a lethal round in a less lethal device.
Gotcha.
So the internal components are changed out in order to make sure, hopefully, if the functioning is intended, that it would not discharge a lethal round, that it would just use.
Something like the chamber is augmented, so it doesn't accept a standard lethal round, something like that?
That's my understanding, and do you have anything to add on that? Or am I close?
Jack Noble with the Sheriff's Office. Yeah, a lot of these new weapon systems that we're requesting are simply just, they're, it's just like technology. Small, minute changes, little improvements, and just like the captain said, that's just, that weapon itself is designated for less lethal. And so there's not going to be any swapping out of parts.
And then like my questions for the DA, do we, maybe it's in a forthcoming slide, but are you prepared today to inform the board and the public about deployment over the last year of beanbag rounds versus lethal rounds?
Yeah, that's correct. We're going to later discuss the 2023 deployments.
Okay, I won't further interrupt your flow then, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so these are three different rounds currently, not currently in the inventory that we're seeking to add that complement the previously aforementioned devices. So 40-millimeter Less-Lethal Spin-Stabilized High-Velocity Sponge Rounds. Smoke Jet Light, CTS Smoke Jet Light is a large diameter canister smoke grenade, and this has the ability to produce a high volume of smoke in a short amount of time. And lastly, CTS 40-millimeter Multi-Three Foam Baton is 40-millimeter Less-Lethal Round that consists of three rubber projectiles versus one, and it has its own unique abilities. Most notably, it has the ability to breach barriers such as glass at a distance. All right, Special Enforcement Detail deployments from January of 2023 through December of 2023, and these are broken down by Supervisor District. There is a great deal of detail within the annual report itself, but you can see the area, boundaries of each district are denoted in the PowerPoint here with a quantification of deployment by zip code.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So you're probably aware that most of the First District overlaps with the City of Sacramento. So are these instances where there was mutual assistance provided by the Sheriff's Office to Sac City PD?
It could be a scenario of mutual aid assistance, or it could be a scenario where our investigation took us within the jurisdiction of the city, and we were allowed to conduct our operations, sir.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Second District. And Third District. Fourth District.
Wow.
I promise you there's a Fifth District.
Are we having issues?
There we go.
There we go.
So as I explained, there's a greater breakdown within the large annual report of statistical data. One other piece of data that I will call out in addition to all of these, we're talking about 127 total deployments of the Special Enforcement Detail and their associated specialized equipment. There's a discrepancy in number with that of UAS deployments. We had a total of 543 deployments of UAS systems, as those can routinely be used without the rest of the specialized equipment that we have for a variety of reasons. One of them I thought about very recently is coming up is the Fourth of July holiday season. With a use of UAS systems on the Fourth of July itself, likely due to use of fireworks or illegal fireworks, there was a number of fires that occurred, and we were able to rapidly deploy UAS systems to monitor the fire, to coordinate help with the Fire Department, especially some of those fires are not easy to navigate to. So looking at access points, developments in the fire, some of them have the ability to look for heat. So they become very helpful in unique situations such as that. So 543 UAS deployments, and if you look at the breakdown within that report by zip code, you'll find that a couple of zip codes have abnormally high numbers, such as the 95825 had 170 deployments, where other areas have somewhere in the neighborhood of less than 10 upwards to teens. That's because in that geographical region, we had a pilot program called Drone as First Responder that was launched last year for a number of months. And that is, we take an evaluation of an area that has a great deal of calls for service, and we look at the time periods and the days of the week. We try to be as effective as we can in that deployment. So we have a drone on standby with the personnel to both monitor and fly the drone, as well as a person who can actively monitor the airspace. And we monitor the calls for service in that geographical area, and immediately upon notification of a call for service where a drone may be effective, we are able to put the drone on location within a matter of seconds and do a number of things. We can coordinate ground units, we can start gathering not only intelligence, but oftentimes evidence of crimes, as well as we can divert units that are unnecessary. So if we get a call of a large fight at a park, and we're able to put that drone overhead within a matter of seconds, and we cannot detect any sort of unrest at the park, well, rather than continuing three, four, five ground units, depending on the information that's presented to us at the time of the call, we can reduce that down to one to continue and just verify that there isn't a problem at that park and put those resources back into service. That's all that I have for you.
Okay, you have your questions from the Board, Supervisor Frost.
Are the drones managed in each area, or is there a person sitting in a room?
That's a great question, so.
Where are these drones being operated from?
Absolutely, the technology is moving in the direction of being able to have drones stationed in various geographical regions and deploy them from one central location. Technology is, it's very new. It is in use in some smaller cities where one drone can cover the entire city. Obviously, the county is a much bigger area, would require a lot more resources and expense. So we're not there yet. Most of our drones outside of our limited Drone as First Responder trial program that we use are deployed out to our field resources. So the different shifts, day shift, swing shift, night shift, one side of the week, the other side of the week, and North County, South County, we like to have a number of them out and available at any given time. They're secured in protected Pelican cases, and they're ready for use when the circumstances dictate. We don't proactively just fly drones around and monitor areas. The policy prohibits just broad use and surveillance, specific legitimate purpose.
Do you have a few men and women that are really good at the drone?
We do.
Yeah.
We have one dedicated full-time deputy sheriff to the program that maintains the equipment. It's very intensive. These drones require a lot of continuing service, which is why we need as many as we do. At any given time, a number of them are down for maintenance and not serviceable. So that's what's being done behind the scenes all the time.
Interesting.
Great question.
Thank you.
On one tactical event, we had four drones destroyed or heavily damaged by the subject that was the subject of the high-risk event. So we can quickly start finding ourselves in a deficit of available tools.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I see from the Board. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Do, and Kian is our first public comment? There's four total.
Thank you.
Yes.
What you can do with a budget of over half a billion dollars with such a nice video. The Sheriff's MEU policy is grossly out of compliance with state law AB 41 for more reasons than I can explain within a two-minute comment period. First and foremost, last Tuesday's Community Review Commission meeting did not qualify as the well-publicized or conveniently-located community engagement meeting that the Sheriff claimed admitted publicly that it had no press release, no social media posts or emails, and was not conveniently-located among other reasons. But most importantly, the Sheriff's current MEU policy, which hasn't really changed much since 2022, violates AB 41 by allowing it to purchase military equipment without the approval of its governing body, you, the Board of Supervisors. There contains a Maintenance of Military Supply Levels section, which states, "When stocks of military equipment have reached significantly low levels or have been exhausted, the department may order up to 10% of its stock in a calendar year without Board of Supervisors' approval." This section is illegal under AB 481, which requires all military equipment acquisitions by law enforcement agencies to be approved by the governing body without exception. Furthermore, the policy creates a ambiguous lower limit for its military equipment without any sort of upper limit to prevent it from stockpiling military equipment from year to year, as it's currently doing with its rounds and less lethals. Third, AB 481 requires the County Board to only approve a military equipment use policy if that policy satisfies at least four minimum requirements, including the proposed military equipment use policy will safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. Neither the annual report nor the policy itself offer any reassurance that public welfare, civil rights, or civil liberties are seriously considered by the Sheriff's Department. Sacramento residents and impacted families who've lost loved ones to police violence, who you heard recently, have repeatedly declared they feel less safe with the presence of militarized law enforcement. And despite the legislature's intent, there's policy to limit, yes, disproportionate deployment of military equipment, the Sheriff's Annual Use Report actually shows that black people are subjected to 35% of the military equipment deployments despite representing less than 10% of the county's population. There are a bunch of questions that you should be asking right now that I just have not heard yet, and it's your job as the governing body to.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Owens, and as Mr. Owens coming up, I have communicated with Deputy County Executive Jones. One question I just want to make sure of, because we've gotten multiple written comments as well as what Mr. Bliss just addressed. I just would like, might be interested to look at, and just to ensure that Sheriff's policies are up to date. I mean, often we have policies on the books that become irrelevant because state law changes and so forth. So if that's the case, particularly under the AB 481 lens, and just to make sure that we're in compliance.
Yes, Supervisor, I'll work with the Sheriff's Office on exactly that.
And I would assume that you could also rely upon the IG as a tool.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello again. In San Francisco, the San Francisco Police Department drafted a policy to allow lethally armed robots to be used in extreme cases where violent suspects pose an immediate risk to life. I understand that there's going to be some robots, and my question to our subject matter experts in the law enforcement community, will robots be, trying to think of the word here, use lethal force? Because that is quite concerning. That is very concerning. We have seen how governments, when given unlimited power, can really make mistakes. And a robot with lethal force, I remember you, the hope of some movies, Terminator, Robocop, that's just very, very problematic. And I would really urge the Board of Supervisors to ask tough questions and to address that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have some of the Sheriff's Department address that? I think it's a fair question.
Yes, absolutely, great question. We do not have, and we're not seeking the capability of using firearms from drone devices or robots, with the caveat that our Explosive Ordnance Detail robot has always had the capability of discharging either around our water cannon to disrupt a device in place. So it does have that capability, and express use is for explosive ordinance.
Great, thank you very much. Britt.
Britt?
Thank you. See, I'm not that short, but yeah. Hello again. I wanted to echo that there are a lot of questions that I think need to be addressed and followed up with the Sheriff's Department in regards to AB 481, especially as it was discovered last week that there needs to be a well-publicized and conveniently-located community engagement meeting. And I think last Tuesday's community review was that meeting, I believe, which was revealed during that meeting. And in no point too, as we know, there's two minutes to speak. There's not really a community engagement. Also, who comes to these things? I would have so many other places I would love to be. And we know this is a huge county. There would be so many people involved in these, in this discussion. And we just saw that video. I actually, I work in film, and that was just so dystopic, like dystopian. Actually, too, I work in film. I got to work here at this location for that Leonardo DiCaprio movie that was recently here. And once again, too, why it's important to look at these, this budget of where money could go. When I went back to school for film, I took a class, it was an elective, and it was an administration of justice. And one of the things that I learned was a lot of our governing is criminalizing poverty. As we saw in these videos, a lot of those cars were half-broken down, shattered glasses, the apartments. And of course, we can not go through the philosophy, maybe crime will always exist. But what's happening is, as people become disenfranchised more, it's like quicksand. So you run out of money, it's hard to pay for your car, and all of these things are against the law, and then just put people further and further disenfranchised. And what I see here is just a stratification of military versus disenfranchised people. Thank you so much.
Debbie? Thank you.
Can you bring it down three inches? Thank you. Hi, I'm Debbie, and I just want to say that I appreciate this topic today, and I have a few thoughts I would like to share with the Board. The purpose of government is to maintain our individual rights, and we are in contract with the government to protect them. And we do have police powers that we've asked you to use. I do know the frustration of the public with law enforcement. My experience is that calling 911 implies that, as a private citizen, we have lost all control of the situation, and we are asking for an intervention from government to control the situation. Thank you. We are trusting that the proper use of force will be used in that situation to bring it under control. My request is that we have public service announcements, letting everyone know how the process is to be implemented. What's the progression of the use of force? What is our policy of our police powers? When are these, when are these devices going to be used and in what situation? When, where? And explain to the public in a forthright manner that this is protecting the process of protecting us. But why, when do you cross the line? And I think public service announcements are a really great way to do that. Let them know, when you call 911, you're saying, "Help, I'm out of control, and we're asking government to control the situation." A few years ago, we started having public service announcements on mental health.
Can you please wrap up, when you--
Okay, thank you. And I think that having this public service announcement would alleviate this with our difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see--
That concludes your public comment.
--no more members of the public. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I appreciate this report, and I just want to say, you know, kind of relative to some of the comments that were made of the intersection of technology and human discretion. And just, I think, as we go down this road, I hope that the department, and I believe that you are, is mindful of that and not ceding that human element over to something that could, you know, be a slippery slope towards an interaction that we don't want when we're calling for help. And then the second part of that toward that end is, you know, that these technologies have the opportunity to remove the threat of life to both sides of the equation, to the individuals as well as to the responding officers. And so, you know, when we hear situations of events that have escalated into the taking of a life, I'd like to know if these tools have been utilized in those instances where we can keep officers removed from having immediate threat so that we can de-escalate that situation, potentially without that loss of life. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I see no others. This is a receive and file, so at this time, we, the board, will recess and go into closed session. If we-- Through the chair. Oh. I do believe there is a portion of this that--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--does need to be approved, correct? You are correct. Item number two, authorize. Or I'm sorry, that's wrong. Approve the attached resolution. Is there a motion?
Yes, so noted.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. If we could now recess into closed session and get that started as quickly as possible, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you. We'll call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors on June 4th, 2024. Would the Clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Yes, good afternoon, Supervisors Serna--
Here.
Desmond--
Here.
Frost--
Here.
Hume--
Here.
And Kennedy--
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please read the first item for the afternoon.
Item 46, this is the Sacramento County Youth Commission 2023-24 Annual Report.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, Board members, County Executive David Villanueva, executive leadership team, and members of the public. My name is Rochelle Verlonca, and I'm the advisor to the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission is bringing forth their annual report, and will be giving the board an update on activities related to voter preregistration, health and safety, racial and economic justice, environmental care, education, national and global connections. I would like to introduce Chairperson Bianca Brown, who will begin the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, Board members, County Executive Villanueva, executive leadership team, and members of the public. My name is Bianca Brown, and we are the Sacramento County Youth Commission, excited to update you on our latest accomplishments while also thanking you for your imperative role in our success. I'm the Chair of the Youth Commission, and I've been a part of the Youth Commission for four years. I'm excited to present alongside other motivated young leaders who are also passionate about advocating for the youth of Sacramento County. Abi Kara serves as the Commission's Vice Chair, and Jolie Deng is the Commission's Secretary, who will be taking on an even greater leadership role next year as the Commission's Vice Chair. This fall, I'm headed to Stanford University--
Hey.
--to study data science and computer science. Other seniors on the Commission include Allison Flowers, who's headed to Consumnas River College, and Abi Kara, who's off to Creighton. I cannot be more proud of their academic and civic accomplishments and know that they will continue to make a positive impact on their communities. Other speakers here today include myself, Mackenzie Olmstead, Celine Ching, MJ Vaughn, Joyce Lynn, Diana Haas, Emmanuel Amanhor, and Joy McDaniel. The Sacramento Youth Commission is a 15-member advisory board of Sacramento's youth. There are three commissioners from each of our five supervisory districts, with each serving three-year terms. The Commission was established as a leadership panel which gives a voice to Sacramento County's youth, advocating on their behalf as well as notifying the Board of Supervisors of youth-related activities and concerns. Within our Commission's general aim, advocating on behalf of youth, our four subcommittees narrow in on the most impactful issues relating to teens. This year, we decided to maintain the subcommittee's voter preregistration and environmental care from 2023, since they remain extremely relevant today. Distracted driving and mental health became a collective subcommittee under Health and Safety alongside with the addition of a racial and economic justice subcommittee. We believe these branches represent the values and interests of youth within Sacramento County and is representative of the work the Commission has done from 2023 to 2024. Voter preregistration. This longstanding subcommittee was founded because young adults aged 18 to 21 are historically underrepresented in elections. Despite recent jumps in engagement from young adults in the recent elections, consistent preregistration is necessary. Young people are the future of our nation, and thus it is critical to encourage young people to be civically engaged and participate in elections, especially as primaries approach. Voter education is essential, and exposing our youth to preregistration and polling resources is necessary to ensure that young voices are heard. This year, within the voter preregistration subcommittee, we continued our tradition of collaborating with local school districts to pass consecutive resolutions formally recognizing High School Voter Education Weeks. We have maintained an ongoing partnership with Elk Grove Unified School District, culminating in the successful adoption of a resolution. Other work includes using our social media platforms to spread voting information to the youth demographic within Sacramento County. We continue facilitating the connection of youth to resources by participating in the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls inaugural festival. Events like these help us establish strategic collaborations with various nonprofit organizations and county resources to amplify voter literacy efforts and expand our outreach. The Health and Safety Subcommittee was founded to spread awareness of the widespread issues affecting teens and young adults. As times change, it is important to keep Sacramento's youth engaged and educated. It is important to help open young minds to new opportunities to improve and talk more about mental health and wellness and spread awareness on the dangers and repercussions of substances. The young adults are the future of Sacramento County, and it is important to allow them the resources to live a happy, safe, and healthy life. This subcommittee is largely comprised of members of the former Mental Health and Distracted Driving subcommittees. Thus, the Health and Safety Subcommittee's priorities are supporting advocacy events that promote wellness and encourage safe driving behaviors. This year, the Health and Safety Subcommittee have been maintaining our billboard campaign. Due to the Commission, the subcommittee has started a newsletter to send out to the community. Similarly, the commissioners have been hard at work promoting on social media different national days or awareness posts relating to our mission. This year has also been a year of continuing efforts of building and sustaining relationships with nonprofits.
The Racial and Economic Justice Committee of Sacramento County Youth Commission was established this year to spearhead Sacramento County Youth Commission's first-formalized racial and economic justice pillar in advocating for our county's historically marginalized and underserved youth. As a youth-driven response to the Board of Supervisors' 2020 declaration of racism as a public health crisis and ongoing system disparities at the community level.
As part of this committee, we aim to address and advance the life conditions of underserved youth through leading and promoting policy advocacy, to sponsor and propel qualitative ethnographic research, highlighting the lived experience of marginalized and underserved youth, establish and provide scholarship opportunities culturally and socio-economically relevant programming and direct service, and engage as youth leaders to statewide social justice coalitions. This year, we have served as a youth-led collaborating partner to the 2024 Northern California Youth Racial and Economic Justice Summit, which amassed over 200 participants from over 60-plus social change organizations, including 30 youth-led clubs. We have also engaged ourselves, the Coalition Network of over 100 nonprofit and youth-serving organizations, advocacy groups, and public officials, including Sacramento City Council Member Maiveeng, the Reclamation Project at 916, Asian American Liberation Network, Alliance for Education Solutions, and the California Center for Civic Participation.
As of now, we are serving as a leading coordinator to the Sacramento County Youth Bill of Rights and Articles for Life Betterment of California Youth, which is a grassroots research project highlighting youth experiences and needs amidst racial, economic, health, educational, social, and other inequities. The project's already conducted one countrywide information collection session and established a preamble, and the Commission Committee shall continue to serve as a consulting partner and review research.
The Environmental Care Subcommittee aims to educate youth about ongoing environmental events and how they can help. We would like to spread awareness of current environmental issues and educate youth on how they can make, and how they can take action against this. As the ramifications would heavily impact the future of youth, we also plan to organize events and programs surrounding environmental care and introducing youth to environmental sustainability. Joyce Lynn and Allison Flowers are co-chairs of this subcommittee, and other members include Diana Haas and Joy McDaniel. Throughout the past year, the Environmental Care Subcommittee focused on the importance of soil health and sustainable practices. We promote World Soil Day through social media, sharing facts about the importance of keeping soil healthy and how this can have large environmental impacts. We also address current soil degradation and the negative consequences that may stem from continued soil declination, encouraging students to adapt sustainable soil management and sustainability. We are also planning gardening clubs at various local elementary schools in regards to school garden cleanups and maintenance. We would like to foster new relationships with elementary schools for future partnerships and the creation of student-driven garden maintenance systems that simultaneously educate students on sustainability and cultivate healthy school gardens, which produce, which produce produce that they can enjoy.
This year, Chair Brown and I spearheaded the creation of the Education Subcommittee, aiming to spread awareness of educational disparities and working towards closing this gap. Our goals included promoting scholarship within Sacramento County and advocating for widespread educational equity for all. In the past year, the Education Subcommittee has focused on improving its social media presence and school partnership. The Subcommittee celebrated National Special Education Day in a social media post that informed the students on the history that led to progress for equal educational opportunity as well as recognizing how much access to education has improved throughout the years. Additionally, the Subcommittee held a school-wide book drive at Franklin High School and collected around 1,000 books donated by students. These donations are given to local schools and libraries to increase students' access to physical copies of books. The book drives simultaneously aided educational access throughout Sacramento County and improved student solidarity, as students who recognize the need for equal access to education were willing to take action themselves and help as much as possible. This March, Sacramento had the honor of serving as a host city for the International Visiting Leaders Program, for which the Sacramento County Youth Commission was invited to lead an intergenerational listening session. The Commission drove powerful discussions with representatives from the U.S. Department of State and leaders across Europe, speaking on youth-driven social change and civic participation. Commissioners Celine Ching, Mackenzie Olmstead, and Joyce Lynn spotlighted the most impending issues impacting Sacramento County youth to the international leadership community, including youth substance abuse and prevention, voter turnout, mental health, education, and racial and economic equity. We are proud to represent the Commission as we continue to establish partnerships both within our communities and beyond, uniting our broad and ambitious mission to serve our generation. We would like to thank you all again for your role in giving youth a platform to make a difference in Sacramento County, and look forward to our continued collaboration. Do you guys have any questions?
Actually, Supervisor Desmond.
Well, I'll start with a comment and thank all of you for the outstanding presentation. And may I just point out that Mackenzie Olmstead is actually the daughter of my Chief of Staff, for those of you who didn't know. And I hope you all feel really good that, you know, we got the chambers packed to listen to this presentation from the Sacramento Youth Commission, so. And I certainly, well, there's a lot of other, I think, contenders for positions on the Sacramento Youth Commission out in the chambers today, so. The work you do, you have identified the right topics of concern for Sacramento County, and your voice is incredibly important to all of us up here as we look at policy decisions and make policy decisions that affect everybody in Sacramento County. So thank you all for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I too want to offer my sincerest thanks for your service and certainly second much of what Supervisor Desmond has just mentioned. But it's always important, I think, when we have as many young people as we do in this audience, and in this case, hearing a very well-articulated report from our Youth Commission, that knowing that many of you are going to go off and do great things in college and elsewhere, please don't forget to consider coming back to your home county in Sacramento and serving. And that can manifest its way in many forms, obviously, and not the least of which is maybe even elective office, because I can tell you right now, knowing my commissioners and the entirety of the Commission as well as we do, and I've just seen the level of maturity and intellect and vision and energy that you give to something as important as advising this board, that I have no doubt we're looking at tomorrow's leaders here and elsewhere. So I want to wish everyone well, and again, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost.
I want to third what has already been said, and I want to say I'm really impressed with the broad list of issues that you're delving into and looking at. I want to thank you for your leadership and your advisory to the board, and I also want to say that your perspective is really important. You're seeing through, you're coming from a different perspective because, not just because of your age, but your generation and your culture is possibly different than maybe what we have experienced in our lives, some of us long, long lives. And we really appreciate your leadership and your willingness to engage and act as an advisory body for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank your staff liaison for bringing you here and opening it up here today, and thank each one of you for your excellent public speaking skills and how well you articulated all of the concerns that you're trying to tackle with your Commission. And I just encourage you for the rest of your time, not only in school, but as you get into your adult life, to continue to pour into the world around you. It's going to be fulfilling for you, and obviously, we need people to step up-- It's going to be fulfilling for you, and obviously, we need people to step up and kind of shepherd in new ideas and ways of thinking. For all those guys back there in the audience, pay attention here. These are folks that are stepping up and getting it done, so we expect the same from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll take that one step further. For all of those Jesuit students in the room today, I want you to notice that the women are taking up the mantle of leadership in Sacramento County. So I want to thank all of you for your hard work, your dedication, and your success. As Supervisor Desmond said, you have articulated and pinpointed the issues that are of most importance to so many people, not just youth in the county of Sacramento. And I also want to go one step further and say that years passed, and I've been a big supporter of the Youth Commission for many years, and wanting it to be more substantive than it has been sometimes in the past. Sometimes there's been a project that they wheel out and they do, and it was good, but nothing like what I'm seeing here today, nothing like the well-thought-out, deep, heavy policy that you have taken on. And it makes me very hopeful for the future of this county, and I want to thank you for your time. And for those of you who are leaving to go on to other things in school, best of luck to you. And for those of you who are staying, I hope you'll continue the energy, because this county needs you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Are we getting a photo?
Oh, yeah. I'm so sorry. Let's do mine, Chair.
Let's all get down to the, well then.
Item 47 is the Housing and Infill Resolution of Intention.
All right. Thank you, Flo. No PowerPoint for this, but just briefly, a couple of words. As all of you know, board members, this is a follow-up item to our April 10th Housing and Infill Workshop, where the board provided us as staff fairly clear direction as it relates to potential zoning code amendments, county code amendments, financial incentives, regulatory incentives. We've taken that feedback and tried to encapsulate that into what is called the Resolution of Intention in this board package. Really what we see this resolution doing is providing the guardrails for us as we go and implement the board's direction over the next, I don't know, 12 to 18 months to formally change some of the programs that we have, whether it's amending the zoning code, county code, et cetera. I do want to note in the staff report on pages two and three, there's a table where we've tried to break out each of those pieces and provide an approximate estimated completion date for each one of those pieces. Obviously, some are going to happen sooner than others. The long pole in the tent here is the zoning code amendments. That'll take a bit longer, but just want to reassure the board that we are expecting to check in with each of you individually as we go and implement the board's direction before we bring these things to you for adoption. We want to make sure that we're continuing in alignment with the board's direction we received on April 10th, as well as is enumerated in the resolution. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, as well as Claudia Wade, who is our county engineer and overseeing special districts as well. She can speak to, if necessary, the financial piece of this, but I think this encapsulates what the board is looking for.
Thank you, Todd. And speaking for myself, it does, I thank you for your efforts on this. We have other governmental agencies throughout the region that keep talking about the, you know, importance of infill, and, you know, but it's the local agencies that really have the task of implementing, and if we don't make it easier and we don't lower bars and hurdles that shouldn't be there, then you can dictate all day long, it's not going to happen. It's not feasible, it's not timely, it's not going to happen. So I appreciate all the work that your staff is putting into this. You're taking it very seriously, and that shows by the good work that you've been doing. Thank you. Any other board members? Is there a member of the public?
We have one public comment, and Chris Norum.
Chair Kennedy, Chris Norum with the North State Building Industry Association, here in strong support of this measure. You have our letter, which is actually a coalition letter from most of the business organizations in the region, strongly in support of this. This is really the culmination of years of effort by the board to try to address the housing crisis. And I think we all know that if we, you know, don't do something dramatic, then we're going to kind of get a lot of more of what we already have here, and we all know that that's not acceptable. So while there's some fine tuning, I'm sure that it's going to happen when this item comes back in ordinance form, we strongly support, you know, giving the staff as much authority as you can, you know, to move things forward, and would like to continue to work with your staff and you on working through any kind of fine tuning we have to, to make it something that's going to work for everybody. So anyway, I'm happy to entertain any questions, but thank you very much for your support. And thanks, everyone from Jesuit for coming down for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Norum.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I want to thank Todd for really listening carefully to the board and to others as it relates to this county's commitment to housing, but I'd say equally important, the right kind of housing that kind of spans the spectrum of needs, economic needs across the county, and really kind of taking further the state designation that we're all very proud of. I do want to mention, though, that there has been some parallel work that's been going on in a similar space as it relates to Sac Suer District that we all serve on, in terms of looking at incentives that are within the control of that particular agency to further incent commitments and financial investment in infill development within the county. So I'm hopeful that not just, as is expressed in this resolution, our county will continue to do what we can to thoughtfully address the housing crisis and the need to really exploit in a good way our infill potential, but we'll be looking at sister agencies that have a similar commitment so that we can kind of package things and make it easier and kind of reduce the level of angst that some may still have about investing in infill and commercial quarters. I think we have a real moment in time here to take advantage of, and so I would just encourage staff to kind of keep that in mind.
And real quick, Dave DeFonte, Deputy Kenny Executive, just on that point, we have been coordinating a lot with Sac Suer around this issue. I've been in direct contact with Mike Hewitt over there a number of times in the last few weeks, so I think that's probably based on direction he's received from the board of Sac Suer, and I appreciate that. But rest assured, we'll keep talking with them and our other partners as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I want to, just want to thank Todd Smith and Dave DeFonte and the entire community development team for taking what was fairly directed but general thoughts from the board and codifying them into language, so that we are being mindful in our intention of trying something new. You know, they say that one of the most dangerous mindsets is justifying what you're doing, because that's the way it's always been done. And so I think this is putting our money where our mouth is to say, we do want to try something different to see if that works to have different results. And I think the business community, at least by looking at the letters of support, they've taken notice, and I think they do stand ready to help us tweak and make sure that the efficacy of this has the intended results. So thank you very much.
Supervisor Desmond.
And very quickly, thank you, Supervisor Hume. I agree, because the ultimate measure of this is whether the business community, the development community sees this, and they start dipping their toe into the water and investing more in housing projects in these infill areas. So I too just want to thank you, Todd, and Dave, and your whole team for all this work. I think this is, it is definitely a step in the right direction. It is going to move the needle forward in helping us get more housing, but I also think it also respects and values that we all want to see good quality products. It does not sacrifice that. So thank you, and I'm in strong supports. And Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item, please.
Item 48. This is to rescind a minor use permit requirement for on sale of alcoholic beverages, a zoning ordinance amendment to amend Chapter 3 of the Sacramento County Zoning Code to rescind minor use permit requirement for on sale of alcoholic beverages. The environmental document is exempt.
Kimber Gutierrez with Sacramento County Planning and Environmental Review. I will be presenting the rescission of the minor use permit requirement for on sale of alcoholic beverages. To provide a little bit of background, on February 7th of 2023, the board adopted a resolution directing staff to explore options to streamline the county's development review process. Based on this direction, planning and environmental review staff explored the possibility of rescinding the minor use permit requirement for service of alcohol at restaurants and similar eating establishments, which is currently required by the zoning code. Staff has found through that research that public input and engagement on this entitlement has been very minimal, and the conditions that are included in the minor use permit have become pretty standardized and often mirror the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, or ABC, license conditions, as well as existing county code requirements. So therefore, staff believes it is a requirement that could be reconsidered to facilitate expeditious development, and the rest of my presentation kind of explains the why behind Just to provide kind of an overview of what is currently required and kind of where the requirement stemmed from, the board adopted the requirement for on-sale license, minor use permits in 2015. Since that time, staff has processed 82 requests. No requests have been denied, though a small number have been withdrawn for a variety of reasons. The processing fee for a minor use permit is $1,337.60, and they are also approved at the planning director level. The average processing time for this type of permit is approximately three months, and the review process includes distribution of the application to a small number of reviewing agencies, including the sheriff's office, and notification to property owners and tenants within 300 feet of the site regarding the request. Applicants are precluded from obtaining an alcohol license from ABC until the minor use permit has been issued by the county as well. So during our research, staff reviewed the minor use permits that were issued over the last two years and discovered that the conditioning did not change in a material way from site to site. Staff also met with representatives from ABC, as well as business licensing and the sheriff's office, to discuss standard conditioning practices, existing licensing requirements for alcohol sales, and also ran through the option of potentially rescinding the minor use permit requirement completely. The reviewers indicated that a standard set of conditions seemed applicable across the sites that we reviewed, and in review of those different business and alcohol license that received minor use permit approvals, we found that the conditions that were added on the minor use permits were also included as conditions on the ABC license, so there is a little bit of duplicate efforts there. And then also, a number of the conditions were just notations regarding applicable county standards. Here's just a visual of the proposed amendment to the zoning code. It would essentially just be eliminating the on-sale of alcoholic beverages from our land use table and eliminating the use regulations and kind of minor use permit requirements from Chapter 3 of the zoning code. Preliminary strikeout language, so what you just saw on the last slide, as well as a memo describing the background of the amendment, was distributed to all 14 of the CPAC chairs, along with an inquiry as to whether the CPAC wished to hear the amendment as a workshop item. We did receive requests for the workshop from Fair Oaks, Arden Arcade, and Southeast CPACs, as well as the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, or CMAC. Staff did a workshop presentation at each of those CPACs and CMAC and received minimal questions on the proposed amendment and no public comments. Overall, we found that the CPAC and CMAC members were appreciative of staff's desire to streamline the development process and make it easier for business owners to operate and conduct business in the county. The Planning Commission also considered the project on April 8th of this year and voted five yes, zero no to recommend that the board approve the request. We also received similar comments from the Planning Commission about appreciating staff's desire to streamline the development process. So staff does recommend that the board approve this amendment so that restaurants and other similar businesses that serve food and wish to serve alcoholic beverages can move straight to applying for a business license, as well as their alcohol license, without going through this extra process. This would help streamline the regulatory process for these types of businesses that wish to serve alcohol as part of their operations. We do anticipate that the change will save applicants both time and money, and there are no expected negative impacts on the community well-being. Additionally, if the minor use permit requirement were to be rescinded, it would free staff to work on some other important entitlements. If the board did deny this zoning code amendment, the on-sale of alcohol will just continue to require that minor use permit prior to ABC licensing.
Hang on one second. Supervisor Hume. Okay.
So with that, staff is recommending that the board recognize the exempt status of the request pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the zoning code. And that concludes my presentation.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Look forward to any public comment, if there is any, but I just want to say that, much like the last item, which is a broad brush look at revamping entire processes and giving more discretion to staff, this is really down in the weeds and something that, you know, less than $1,500 per applicant probably never received a complaint letter one about having to go through it, but it's a little thing that just takes away one layer and makes life easier for staff, makes life a little bit easier for these businesses trying to get open, and so I just want to commend staff for kind of peeking under the small rocks, too.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thanks. I'll just add that I think this is commendable, that staff have carefully thought about how kind of an unnecessary additional step within a process is duplicative and unnecessary, and in light of the fact that we have such a strain on, and I know I'm a broken record on this, such a strain on our staff resources in planning especially, I'm glad that, Kimber, that you kind of ended with the punchline that it leaves staff to really focus on other more pressing matters, so I don't want that to be lost on anyone, that this is as much about, I think, managing scarce resources well as it is anything else. So thanks again.
Thank you. Is there any members of the public?
We do have one public comment. Alex Torres.
Thank you, Kimber.
Chair Kennedy, Vice Chair Serna, great to be with you all this afternoon. Alex Torres, I am the advocate for the California Capital Venues Coalition. We represent all the brick and mortar music venues and festival promoters in Sacramento and in the capital region, want to voice our support for this. I think when we're looking at the city level, we're talking about how we can do limited entertainment permits so that bars, you know, wine bars can do, you know, buskers in the corner, have live music, and I think that this is a really important step to Supervisor Hume's comments on helping repeal some of those layers that make it a little bit of a headache. Generally, you know, again, our membership are true entertainment venues, true music venues, but we're very supportive of anything we can do to help roll back some of that bureaucracy, help make sure we're streamlining staff time for our friends in the restaurant and other sorts of businesses. We all, we're just very generally supportive of repealing those challenging requirements. So thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Torres, and I hope that you will provide our staff with whatever comments and input that will also make your portion of this area of business easier to do business in Sacramento County as well. Thank you. I see no other member of the public. The chair will move this item and move staff recommendation.
Second. Vice Chair Serna, seconds, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Unanimous vote.
Before I move on to the next item, I just want to say, although I was the one who presented it, we have Irving Huerta here, who is our assistant planner, who did all of the work. So he prepared all the materials, went to the CPACs. He also has processed a number of minor use permits related to alcohol, so he's been kind of the mastermind in doing all the work for us.
So he's going to be the one doing things differently now, right?
Yes, yes. So just one big thanks to him.
Thank you, Kimber. That was kind of you to point out.
Okay, item 49 is the Jesuit High School Stadium Lighting Project, an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a use permit amendment and design review for a property located at 1200 Jacob Lane in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community.
Good afternoon again. Kimber Gutierrez, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review, and I will be presenting the Jesuit High School Stadium Lighting Appeal. Before kind of diving in, just kind of wanted to kind of provide some parameters. So the Board, per the zoning code, the Board shall hear all appeals from the actions of the Planning Commission and shall review the entire proceeding held before the Planning Commission and make any order it deems just and equitable, including the grant of any permit. So that being said, for my presentation, I am going to be presenting the entire project as it was presented to the Planning Commission, followed by details of the appeal that was received, and lastly, staff's recommendation on the appeal and the project. So the project site is located at 1200 Jacob Lane, the address of Jesuit High School. Jesuit High School campus consists of six parcels situated south of Fair Oaks Boulevard, north of American River Drive, west of Jacob Lane, and east of Piccadilly Circle, in a predominantly residential neighborhood in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. It is within Carmichael Old Foothill Farms, however, the Jesuit High School campus does span the boundary between Arden Arcade and Carmichael Old Foothill Farms, but the project site, which is home to the Marauder Stadium, is within the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. So the stadium parcel is approximately 20 acres in size, and in addition to the stadium, the parcel contains a baseball field, parking lot, and other sports facilities. The stadium is an artificial turf field with an eight-lane synthetic track surrounding the field perimeter. The stadium also includes a freestanding scoreboard with a public announcement system. The total maximum capacity for Marauder Stadium is approximately 3,000 people, and per the project applicant, the stadium is used by Jesuit High School Athletic Program, the Junior Marauder Football League, as well as the Parochial Athletic League Flag Football and Track Program. The entire campus is zoned residential density four. The surrounding land uses are all single-family residential in the RD4 zoning district, as you can see on the map. The exception is the County Oaks, Country Oaks, excuse me, Pet Hospital. Also to the north, across Fair Oaks Boulevard, there are some single-family residential properties within the RD3 and RD2 zoning districts, as well as the Arden Hills Country Club, which is zoned RD2 north of the site. And then the project site is also located approximately .3 miles north of the American River Parkway. So the Board letter provides entitlement history of the Marauder Stadium, and the Planning Commission report, which is Attachment 11, provides a more detailed overview of the school's entitlement history in general. For this presentation, I'm just going to be focusing on the entitlements associated with the stadium itself. So, the school began operations in 1965. We have historical aerial imagery that does indicate the presence of a track and field in the same location as the current stadium. A grading permit for upgrades to the track and field facilities was approved in June of 2015, and the improvements consisted of an all-weather track, stadium field, and stadium seating and press box. On April 8th of 2019, the Planning Commission approved a sixth use permit amendment and design review to legalize the scoreboard and relocated public announcement system on the athletic field, specifically in the Marauder Stadium itself. There have been several temporary use permits issued between 2018 and 2020 for events at the campus and for the use of temporary field lights, and a temporary use permit was issued during the processing of this request for permit lighting to use temporary field lights on August 25th and September 1st of last year for football games. The temporary use permit was issued to test the proposed protocol for night events that was provided by the applicant, which I will discuss a little bit further in my presentation. And Jesuit High School also conducted traffic counts and monitored noise levels during those two football games as well. The applicant is requesting a use permit amendment to allow stadium lighting on the Jesuit High School Athletic Field, as well as a design review to demonstrate compliance with design guidelines. Along with the proposed stadium lighting, the proposed project is intended to expand the timing and use of the existing stadium facilities for several existing athletic program sports teams, which includes football, soccer, lacrosse, and track and field. The applicant is proposing to limit the use of the proposed stadium lights to select evenings to accommodate athletic practices and competitions, primarily during the winter months when the sun sets early or during home football games. The timing of all other school-affiliated sports activities that do not utilize the stadium for practices or games would remain the same. An anticipated event lighting schedule was provided by the applicant and is included in the report package. The proposed times and days of practices and games vary by sport, with the latest game proposed to end by 10:00 p.m. on Fridays. Evening competitions with near-capacity crowds are anticipated to be held between seven and 10 times per year, and evening competitions and practices with smaller crowds below capacity and minimal or no amplified sound are anticipated to be held 20 to 25 times per year. Here's the site plan. The proposed request is to install four permanent stadium light poles at the Marauder Stadium located, the locations are indicated in orange on the site plan. Two of the light poles located on the north side of the stadium would be 100 feet tall. The two other light poles located on the south side of the stadium would be 90 feet tall. The proposed light poles will have LED lights affixed to the top and will be located approximately at the 10-yard lines of the football field. The estimated attendance for athletic competitions upon installation of the field lights would vary by sport and other factors. This could be level of competition, regular season versus playoffs, and weather conditions. The installation of stadium lights at Jesuit High School is expected to increase attendance, however, from 1,200 to 1,500 attendees for most of the regular season football games, and up to 3,000 attendees for postseason or playoff games. For other special sporting events or playoffs, including track and field, lacrosse, and soccer, attendance is expected to be from 200 to 900 attendees. There is no additional permanent parking proposed as part of the project. Both of the Fair Oaks Boulevard, O'Donnell Drive, main campus parking lot entrance, along with the parking lot adjacent to the project site off of American River Drive, would be made available for nighttime games at the Marauder Stadium. The applicant also stated that there is the ability to park approximately 300 vehicles on the soccer rugby fields and another 100 vehicles on the field south of the visitors' bleachers. Particularly, these areas can be utilized for pretty much larger football games during the summer and fall months. An onsite parking summary has also been prepared and is provided in the report package as During maximum-capacity events, parking demand can exceed the number of onsite parking spots that are on campus. Two off-site parking locations have been identified by Jesuit High School and have been previously arranged to use for major events. Those are the Arden Hills Wellness Resort, which is on the north side of Fair Oaks Boulevard, and the Rio Americano High School Parking Lot, which is on American River Drive, approximately a half a mile southwest of the stadium. Attendees also park on nearby residential streets where it is public parking and is Here is a detail of the proposed lights. On the right and on the left are provided renderings. The request also includes additional code-compliant lighting for the bleachers and pedestrian pathways in the stadium. They also are relocating the existing PA speakers from wooden poles to the new stadium light poles at their current authorized location and height, which is 44 feet above grade on the home side and 35 feet above grade on the visitor's side. Here are more renderings from various viewpoints within the stadium and from adjacent streets. The applicant has submitted a protocol for night events document, which I mentioned earlier. This would be used in conjunction with the high school's existing standard operations, policies, and procedures, and the guidelines contain procedures for notification of neighbors of high-profile or high-capacity events, communications to Jesuit High School families and students, as well as visiting schools regarding conduct expectations, duties of volunteers assigned to these events, and management of on- and off-site parking and operation of the sound system. An environmental impact report was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for this project and released for public review on September 15th of last year. The Planning Commission met on October 23rd last year to receive oral comments on the draft EIR and voted to acknowledge the end of the public comment period on October 30th. The Planning Commission also directed staff to prepare the final EIR. A total of 58 comment letters and 15 oral testimonies were received, and a response to comments was prepared and is included as part of the final EIR as well. The EIR itself provides discussion on potential impacts to aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, noise, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. The EIR concluded that the project would result in a significant and unavoidable impact related to aesthetics and noise. All other anticipated impacts are less than significant and can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. Staff has prepared findings of fact and overriding considerations for the significant and unavoidable impacts to noise and aesthetics. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program was also prepared for the impacts identified as potentially significant but could be reduced to a less-than-significant level through inclusion of those mitigation measures, and the final EIR was released on February 29th of this year.
Hang on, Kimber. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to interrupt the flow of the presentation. I have three questions, and I'll start maybe with the, what I hope is the easiest and will go more complicated from there. The 70 dB a sound measurement, is that, is that for a certain period of time during the day, or is that at any time? As far as the noise at property line?
We have our environmental coordinator, Julie Newton, here.
Oh, great.
Good afternoon, Julie Newton with County Planning. So the mitigation measure that's being proposed as it relates to noise, it sets a performance standard in line with our county noise ordinance and general plan policies, so that would be at the property line and is specific to the noise levels from the speaker, which can be controlled. The EIR found significant unavoidable impacts related to the other noise that cannot be controlled, such as marching band and the noise coming from the attendees.
So, but the standard that's being used, the 70 dB a, is that for a specific time period, or is that even during the middle of the day would be that same standard?
That would be for use of the PA system, the maximum.
I'm just asking about the county's code generally.
Oh, the county's code generally?
Yes.
Is...
I know that you can't make a certain noise until a certain time of the day, and it has to stop by an end time of the day. Is that 70 dB a within that period, or is that just generally speaking?
The 70 dB a, I believe, is during daytime hours.
Okay.
Noise levels.
It's 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. 70 dB a.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Second question. In the lighting diagram, it looked like it showed foot candles in the negligible range of zero point something as you start to a butt neighboring properties. Granted, this is a situation where we're putting, where we'd be putting new light in a residentially-zoned area, residential against residential. If this were a commercial property, do you happen to know off the top of your head what our standard is as far as for the illumination plan, what the foot candles would be at the property's edge?
I think our zoning code requires that it is zero at the edge of the property. We, for commercial properties, it's usually in regards to like parking lots.
Right.
So it does say zero foot candles. There shouldn't be any off-spilling of light onto adjacent properties.
Gotcha. Okay. And then my third question is, I read in the findings of fact and overriding considerations, there were three issues that were significant but unavoidable. What is the threshold for determining doing a full EIR versus, say, a mitigated NEGDEC?
So there's, there are several factors that we take into consideration. Each, each individual impact under SEQA has separate identified thresholds. So, under the realm of impacts we consider through SEQA, any one of those impacts, if they're found to be significant and unavoidable, would require an EIR. The county also takes into consideration potential controversy around the project, and if an EIR is warranted in that case as well.
So if I heard you correctly, one significant but unavoidable impact triggers a full EIR?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to advisory recommendations, so they did go to a number of different meetings. The Design Review Advisory Committee met on April 21st of 2022. They did recommend that the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC first met on April 20th of 2022, and after discussions, voted 4 yes, 0 no, 3 absent to continue the item. At the time, the environmental document had not been circulated for public review, so they wanted to ensure that they had their meeting when the environmental document was available for the public. So at that April meeting, we did have 11 members of the public speak on the project, eight in opposition and three in support. Those in opposition spoke to the concerns about parking during an event, people parking in residential neighborhoods, excessive noise levels during existing events, lack of security, and kind of littering and lots of trash in the neighborhood after an event, environmental impacts related to the proposed lights, the light and event schedule, specifically light shut-off past 10:00 p.m., lack of transparency by Jesuit High School representatives, the neighbor meetings held were being held at inconvenient times, is the feedback we received, and then traffic and congestion during the events as well. So, after that meeting and after preparation of the environmental document, the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC met again on October 11th of 2023. They did ultimately vote to recommend the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements, that was a 3 yes, 2 no. 20 comments were received, 18 opposed to support. The comments in opposition included concerns on increased traffic, parking on residential streets, effects of ambient lighting, excessive noise levels, safety, air quality issues from idling buses, and decreased property values. Before voting on the item, the CPAC did note that Jesuit could do a better, do more to be better neighbors and to address noise, traffic, and safety concerns, and then it was also noted that the technology of the proposed lights would be better than the temporary lights that have been used for the off-and-on events. The, as I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, that the site does kind of also border Arden Arcade, so we did notify Arden Arcade CPAC of both of the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC meeting in case, in case any of those CPAC members wanted to attend and provide comment. For the final hearing, the final hearing body for the project was the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission did meet on March 11th of this year. They did vote 5 yes, 0 no to approve the proposed project, and they did make some condition amendments. This included an amendment to Condition 10 to remove the word evening, deletion of Condition 12, and an amendment to Condition 19, adding the intersection of Tennyson Way and Marlboro Way to the list of streets that will be posted with no event parking signs during the events. Those condition amendments remain and are captured in the condition document that is in your packet as well. A total of 43 members of the public commented during that hearing. Staff counted 13 opposed and 30 in favor. Most of those in opposition were neighboring homeowners or residents, while those in favor were a mix of Jesuit alumni, staff, students, and parents, and neighboring homeowners and residents as well. Generally, those opposed, again, expressed concerns that there would be continued and potentially increased noise issues from events at the stadium due to the PA system, perceived issues with the SEQA EIR analysis. issues with the SEQA EIR analysis, traffic issues from events at the stadium due to the PA, sorry, not due to the PA, just traffic and parking impacts, and a lack of benefit to the neighborhood from the project. The supporters generally cited the health, scholastic and safety benefits of night practices and games over daytime ones for students, coaches and attendees, community benefits from greater game attendance and parity with other high school athletic programs for reasons they supported the project. Supportive neighboring property owners framed event noise as pleasant and exciting rather than negatively impactful. Planning Commissioners stated that while they were sympathetic to the neighbors' noise, parking and traffic concerns, they saw many of the concerns were addressed by the conditions of approval and mitigation measures. They further stated that they had no concerns related to the sufficiency of the EIR itself. The next two slides contain several of the conditions of approval and restrictions that are included in attachment to findings and conditions document. They also, again, reflect the amendments made by the Planning Commission. So I was going to run through them really quick just so that we are crystal clear on the operational conditions that are being included as part of the project. So conditions six through eight require the applicant to kind of look into some additional landscaping. This could include some trees to help further shield the lights from American River Drive as well as residential properties to the south. Condition nine requires the relocation of the speakers from the existing wooden poles to the stadium lights itself. It also provides some flexibility to allow alternative speaker configurations within the stadium, subject to approval by county staff. This is to kind of look for alternatives and other, other configurations to kind of help limit the noise from the PA system. It does have to make sure if any alternative configurations are pursued, that it achieves the noise performance standard that is in mitigation measure NOI one, which is condition 23. Condition 10 limits outdoor events with amplified sound to be scheduled between 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is consistent with the county noise ordinance. Condition 11 limits the utili, utilization of the lights to high school athletic program, sports and events. Jesuit High School junior marauders, as well as the PAL football, flag football and track program would only use the stadium during daytime hours. And then conditions 12 through 14 limit the hours of operation of the stadium lights for various sports and practices and games. Condition 15 requires night events to follow the protocol for night events. So that attachment would be something that is stamped and signed and included as part of attachment to, you know, for future planners and code enforcement officers to utilize to make sure that the protocol is being followed. Conditions 16 through 18 kind of reiterate and require the use of overflow parking during high capacity events and then the off-site shared parking during maximum capacity events. That is all outlined in the protocol for night events, but we also wanted to enforce that, reinforce that with conditions of approval. It also talks about obtaining street use permits to post no event parking signs at a number of different neighboring streets. And then condition 19, this is the condition that requires the applicant to submit a yearly report for three years. This is really to serve as a reporting mechanism to make sure that staff is reviewing kind of what happened in the past year and then also what they're anticipating to happen in the upcoming year and making sure that they're following all of the conditions of approval. In addition to attachment two, staff has also prepared attachment two A, which was provided, I believe this morning, which contains additional conditions of approval and additional language for condition 19. This is based on the appellant's comments and materials as well as discussions with the applicant. These are for the board's consideration. I can review them in more detail if you would like, but they are not captured in attachment two. So if you did want to adopt any of these new conditions or modify, that would need to be part of the motion. Moving on to the appeal. So, an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the project was filed on March 20th. A letter was provided to describe the reasoning behind the appeal. So the appellant states that their reasoning for appealing is to ensure the project is responsive to the needs and concerns of the neighborhood community, as well as the needs and concerns of the high school. It is also noted that the proposed project will have a significant and unmitigated impact on the neighborhood and that additional dialogue with the neighbors and serious consideration of proposed solutions would improve the alternatives, cumulative impacts and mitigation analysis contained within the EIR, as well as the statement of overriding considerations. And with that reasoning, the appellant did request the following. So, one, to recognize the burden of the community, on the community, and take their proposed mitigation strategies seriously, including proposed conditions. Ensure that late night games are in fact scheduled to mitigate harm to students and other attendees only as necessary. Revisit the glare and noise analysis, factoring in community feedback. And last, explore technological solutions to the noise problem like what was done for the stadium lighting. Supporting and supplemental appeal materials were provided, including a letter to the board outlining the neighborhood's history with Jesuit and understanding of the proposed project impacts, the perceived inadequacy of the Planning Commission's approval, which was further detailed in a summary of issues and concerns document, which was attached to the letter, and the concerns regarding the inaccuracy of the public record. That is attachment 14 in your packet. And then included with the letter and summary of issues and concerns are proposed permit conditions, additions and corrections. Staff has reviewed all of those supplemental materials and did provide a response to those and is included as attachment 15. So, again, in the board letter are direct responses to each point made in the appeal. After review and consideration of the appeal, staff continues to conclude that the project is consistent with the general plan, community plan and zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses in that the stadium lighting is designed in a way to reduce light trespass glare and sky glow to the maximum extent feasible using modern technology. Additionally, extensive public outreach was conducted to solicit community input and several mitigation measures and operating conditions of approval are included to minimize external impacts to the surrounding area. This includes but is not limited to pedestrian circulation and safety, traffic control, hours of operation, noise and lighting. The project was also supported by the Carmichael Old Foothill Farm CPAC and the Planning Commission and was found consistent with the design guidelines by the DRAK. So although there are significant and unavoidable environmental impact conclusions in the final EIR, staff has prepared that findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations that can be adopted to support the proposed project. So for those reasons, staff recommends that the board deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's action and approve the project. So that, the action would be to deny the appeal, maintaining the Planning Commission's approval of the proposed project with the conditions of approval and mitigation measures that the Planning Commission approved, certify the final environmental impact report as adequate and complete, adopt the SEQA findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, approve the use permit amendment, subject to findings and conditions, find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And I will conclude. I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, thank you, Kimber. I know this has been a very long and arduous process to get us to this, and I want to thank you and, and Julie and Todd and Dave. I've had many meetings with, with all of you. I've had many meetings with neighbors, many meetings with those on both sides of this issue that have different opinions, and there's a lot of passion about this. And, you know, as we get a lot of, I want to hear the public comment, it's incredibly important, and I'll probably have more to say after that. But, to me, I'm, I'm most concerned with the people who live nearby, the people who live on Piccadilly, Lantern and on the streets, south of Jesuit, on the other side of American River Drive, the ones who are most profoundly going to be impacted by this. And, because this is a big change. This is a big change to how this, this high school operates and the type of activity at the high school. And I think we have to all acknowledge that. You know, it's, sometimes it's easy to kind of dismiss some of those concerns, but, you know, my obligation, our obligation is to make sure we make land use decision, that decisions that take everything into account, certainly the quality of life for everybody that lives in, in the community. I want to go through, you know, a few, as I'm going through this and have looked at the staff report, have looked at the conditions that you've developed with a lot of input as really an iterative process, I think, with all parties involved. You know, the traffic, lights and the noise and traffic and public safety, I kind of lumped those together. So I'd like to talk with you a little bit, Kimber, about some of the mechanics, about the conditions with respect to each one of those. So first of all, one thing I heard from the, the folks who are opposed to this or concerned about it, is one thing with the technology, there may be new speaker technology and Jesuit should have the flexibility to be able to change the location of the speakers if new technology comes out that could actually eliminate some of the, some of the noise issues in the surrounding community. Is that being addressed by a condition?
Yeah, so in, it's condition nine, which is on page eight of attachment two. So the 2018 use permit amendment captured the relocation of the PA system to these wooden utility poles that are currently there. So, the poles are in the location of where the permanent lighting would go. So that's why we have this condition that's relocating those speakers from the utility poles to the actual stadium lights themselves. So that's, that's the first part of that condition. The second part of the condition talks about alternative speaker configurations. So, you know, we are saying that those alternative configurations are permitted, but it needs to be reviewed and approved by county staff because we need to make sure that it is achieving the noise performance standards that are set forth in condition 23, which was part of the environmental impact report.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we weren't kind of working against ourselves if we make something so prescriptive that they can't even take advantage of maybe a technology change.
There is some flexibility, but they will still need a review.
Come back, of course, of course. And then getting back to Supervisor Hume was asking about the decibel levels and things like that. You know, one thing I know that's a big concern is the sound, you know, the speaker may be set at a certain volume level, but if, if an announcer, you know, yells into the PA system, that's going to make it go above that level. What, is there a condition that addresses that or a requirement that would be proposed upon Jesuit to reduce that or eliminate that?
I think it's condition 20, I think it's actually condition 22, right, Julie?
Supervisor Desmond, Todd Smith, in response to your question, mitigation measure NOI one, which is condition number two, excuse me, 22, talks about, and I think it's the second bullet point, there's a limiter built into the PA system that can ensure that the performance standard, which is making sure that, that those noise levels don't exceed 70 dB a, that that limit, upper limit is not exceeded. So that limiter is built in from a technological perspective to the PA system to ensure that regardless of how excited an announcer may be, or as the case may be, that the output is limited to that decibel level.
Okay, okay, good. Good, I know, I know that was a concern. With respect to the lights, I appreciate the, the renderings. I think that's, I, I think the, the technology is probably similar to what we've seen in some other high school recent lighting programs where there's not a lot of light pollution or bleed over. So I, you know, I think we've mitigated those issues by and large. With respect to the traffic, I went out there with, actually with Dave DeFonte and Todd Smith during one of their night games last year where they had a, a permit for a night game, just to, we wanted to see firsthand how everything operated with Jesuit's traffic management plan and the parking. We wanted, and, and we wanted to hear the noise levels and everything ourselves, which I think was extremely instructive for all of us. But one of the things we saw there were, were parents actually out there on street corners around Jesuit and directing people where to park, directing them to parking lots and trying to keep people out of the local streets there. And, and I appreciate that, but I want to make sure that if, that there's something in place where that, those restrictions are going to be enforceable. Is that?
Yes.
Because I think when I went out there that day, it was simply just kind of a voluntary thing. Is that, is that correct? So, I'm looking at Dave. Sorry, Dave.
Yeah, so the, the temporary games were allowed because they wanted to implement the protocol for night events, which is attachment nine. And so that was kind of their opportunity to kind of show that it worked, right? So, that protocol for night events is not only included as attachment to the staff report, but we do have a condition that says as an ongoing measure, they need to, operation of night events shall follow the protocol for night events. So they will be tied to that, and that protocol for night events calls out the different volunteers standing at street corners, making sure people are parking in the parking lot first, and protocol for visiting teams' buses, things of that nature as well. So, yes, it is, it is within the conditions of approval and that protocol document will be something that's stamped and part of the final packet, final exhibits if it were approved.
Okay, and, but there, wasn't there, yes, Todd?
Supervisor Desmond, Todd Smith, in response to add on to what Kimber has already said, condition number 18 on page nine does require the project proponent to obtain street use permits from the county's Department of Transportation to post those no event parking signs. So if you can visualize an A-frame sign that's put at the entrances to those adjacent streets and cul-de-sacs that are listed in that condition, so that drivers, when they're looking for a place to park, they see immediately, no, no event parking here, keeping those, those visitors or attendees of the game off of those neighborhood streets.
And that would be, Todd, just to clarify with me, when would they have to get those? For every game? I mean, not for every practice, obviously not, but for any actual competition?
For, for night events.
For night events is what the measure says.
And then, so then that would be enforced, because I think when we went out there, it wasn't something that was enforceable. Someone could have just said, ah, I'm going to park here anyway. But if they have those, it's like a temporary construction road closure and you would actually be enforceable. Is that correct?
It is. So the, the condition calls for that street use permit from the county's Department of Transportation, who actually issues the permit, which will then specify, obviously, all those locations that are mentioned in this condition for where those street, excuse me, those no parking signs go. And we would then, if it's found to be non-compliant, that street use permit then provides us an opportunity for enforcement.
Okay. I think that, that, I think that's good. That's, that's, I think that's really, really important. So I think one of the other things is, is, you know, some of the, the notification, notification provisions and the, you know, communication and, and ongoing meetings with members of the community. I know there were some conditions related to that stuff in prior, associated with prior use permits. Are we just relying on those or do we have any new conditions relating to that? Relating to specifically to communications, you know, a phone call, accessibility to someone at Jesuit if there's an issue, if I'm a, you know, much like we do with Mosaic Law, and, and also the condition relating to, as an ongoing measure, communication, outreach, engagement with the local community, the neighbors?
Nothing outside of the protocol for night events. So there is some language in the protocol for night events that talks about having someone available during the events to, that neighbors can call in order to complain about if someone is parking on the street that they're not supposed to be parking on or parking illegally, then that is available. But other than that, nothing new from what is already included in the previous use permits for Jesuit in general.
Okay, okay. And then I promised my colleagues I'm almost done with some of these questions.
No worries.
But it is, it will obviously be impacting me probably more than my colleagues up here on the dais. But, okay, so, and, and so, Kimber, some of the other conditions that you sent to all of us yesterday?
Yes, I was going to say.
Could you, could we go over those?
Yeah.
Because they, I think they obviously dovetail with some of the things I'm discussing right now. And I don't know if, can we put those on the overhead? Maybe just?
If that's all right, to go over them?
Yeah, so there are four new conditions up here at the front for your consideration. The first is kind of what you're alluding to. It would be to have, because I did go back and look at the previous use permits and there really isn't anything that requires them to have the good neighbor program that they're currently doing or hosting meetings with the community. It, it wasn't part of the conditions of approval for any of the prior use permits. So, did put that as a condition, which would be Jesuit shall continue to implement the good neighbor program and host at least four meetings a year at a variety of times to maximize opportunity for attendance and participation. Feedback that we had received kind of at the CPACs and, and the Planning Commission was that those were held at inconvenient times, especially for people who work a standard workday. So I do think this condition captures that, there needs to be an opportunity for people to participate. to participate. The second is during each academic year, no more than 25 events utilizing the stadium lighting and amplified sound concurrently are permitted. So that does limit the amount of games and events that could occur that use both the lights and the PA system at the same time.
And I think, Kimber, that was, I mean, I know we had discussions about this. I think a lot of that was, was based on the anticipated event lighting schedule.
Schedule, yes.
That Jesuit provided themselves.
Yes.
Okay, and then?
Number three is that we've, we've heard a lot of comments about the Junior Marauder Football League and how people attend those practices and games from the surrounding community. So this one would be not allowing attendees of the Junior Marauder Football League practices to utilize the American River Drive access, except as necessary to meet ADA and public health and safety requirements. So that'd be requiring them to park in the lot off of Fair Oaks Boulevard. And then number four would be that, you know, there's been rumblings that Rio could potentially pursue permanent lighting in the future. So this condition would be to make sure that there is some coordination between Rio and Jesuit to ensure that any nighttime events are scheduled to minimize impacts to the neighborhood.
Great. And it doesn't say one way or another how that would be resolved, it just?
Just saying do it.
And take into account some of the input, obviously, from those who were affected. Okay. And then I know we had the modification.
Yes.
And some language on the bottom of that. And I want to thank County Council Elizabeth as well for this, because I don't think it's really much of a change, it's more of a reference to existing county code. And I had talked to, because this is a change and because a change like this in a residential neighborhood, there's always going to be some unintended consequences.
Right.
I, I think it's important that there is a mechanism that if, not just if, if this board approves this and we have certain conditions in place, if someone's violating those conditions, the county can always take action, whomever that, that, that person is. But my concern is if something like this is adopted, there's got to be a mechanism for this body to reopen this use permit if serious problems are happening, things that we didn't expect. And I think Elizabeth, I mean, I'm, I'm really satisfied with this because it really is the nuisance standard. If it's, if it's a public nuisance, essentially, we would be able to reopen this use permit and potentially impose additional modifications. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to get that. It's important to get that verification from the lawyer. Okay, that's, I think that's all I have for now and I'll turn the floor back over to you, whomever. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I just have one question that goes all the way back, I think it was about a half hour ago to the beginning of Supervisor Desmond's comments.
At least.
Regarding the sound and the fact that the applicant can move the speakers for the PA and that county would review whether or not that would result in a reduction of sound. But in the staff report on page 19, he said the opportunity to explore more advanced technologies is available to the applicant. However, it should be noted that the significant and unavoidable nose impact, noise impact conclusion is not due to the PA system. Is that because the, the noise impact is due to the crowd noise?
Correct.
Okay. So Jesuit has to score fewer touchdowns, it sounds like. All right, thank you.
As a proud CBA alum, I would certainly welcome that.
Okay, anyone else from the board? All right, thank you very much, Kimber. Now here's what we're going to do. We've now heard from our staff presentation. We will now move to the, to the appellant, which I believe there are at least three representatives. I assume you have worked among yourselves to work out who's going to do what part of the presentation. Madam Clerk, is there still a member that will be presenting via virtual?
We do have one member, Elizabeth Hughes, who is joining via Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. At the conclusion of the appellant's presentation, with the board having an opportunity to ask questions, we will then move to the applicant's representative, who also has a presentation. And at the conclusion of that presentation, we will open it up to public comment. So with that, is the appellant available and ready?
Yeah. So they don't have a PowerPoint, the appellant?
That's a good thing.
Yeah, okay. So Elizabeth, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a short PowerPoint. Sorry to disappoint you.
Oh, I haven't received it and provided it to Metro Cable. Did you send that to us?
I did not. I can send it to you now.
We're already through, we're, we've started the hearing, ma'am.
All right.
Okay, so this, this board is very capable of digesting the information without a PowerPoint presentation.
Certainly. Well, the visual that I had shows a GIS map of the 200 residents that started to coalesce because they were concerned about the issues related to traffic and safety and noise. And a lot of the noise is, is very much the PA systems. And so the map itself shows the dots all around the school and all the way to areas close to the river, all the way past El Deo, all the way to Ash, other streets beyond Rio Americano. And the visual is just dotted all the way around. So my goal was to show you that the concerns are very widespread throughout the neighborhood. It isn't just a few people that live nearby. And we don't, we're not asking for the project to be scrapped or canceled or anything. The project's approved and we are in support of the project being approved. We are seeking very much to have the project enhanced. And we want to improve the project more than it already is. They are a top-ranked school with a top-ranked sports program and we'd like to see that they have top-ranked mitigation for their top-ranked facilities. Jesuit High School is investing in advanced facilities and should equally invest in high-quality mitigation measures to minimize the impacts in the neighborhood. And recently Jesuit has, has referenced to us that they do seem to understand how much of a burden their activities are because it isn't just Friday night lights, it's during the week, practices, it's all kinds of weekend activities that are not Jesuit-related. So the neighbors have no downtime from all the activities. So we're asking not for them to just do the minimum, we'd like for them to be a good neighbor and do better. And consider if they're going to have 37 games with lighting and large crowds until 10:00 PM, consider how that impacts the neighborhood that really wants to have a family dinner or a birthday party or swim get-together. Those things are really just not an option for the community anymore. And so mitigation is so key to what we're seeking. We aren't seeking to stop the project. And so my short list for the mitigation to make sure it has some consideration is, you've talked about some of it before, but it doesn't seem to have made the list for being attached as a condition, but restrict the opportunity for communications antennas to be placed on those lighting systems. And while there's no project proposed for something of that, I think making it a never going to happen thing is much safer for the residents to know that a giant cell tower is not going to be visually impacting the neighborhood in some future application. And while we do want the applicant to publish a quarterly calendar of events that identify all the outdoor athletic facilities, keeping us informed, we would like to see that that calendar include all the planned events, including everything that takes place over the summer with camps and trainings and other things, all the things that take place on weekends, all of the events that are non-Jesuit High School activities because Jesuit will be allowing other high schools to use their facilities and other clubs and groups. Those, those activities and those events need to be a part of the calendar so that the neighborhood really knows what's happening. There's no way for us to plan if the calendar doesn't include all the activities. The neighborhood has had a relationship with Jesuit. We all live in the same neighborhood. And as, as Jesuit grows and as they are increasing their activities, we wanted to know if it was possible to have one day of predictable peace and quiet without the nuisance of all of the things that take place all during the week and then again all on Saturdays and Sundays. Is there a way to consider a one-day reprieve for the community? A Good Neighbor feature that says, we'll give you Saturday without something taking place, without activities, without games, without events? And you talked about allowing Jesuit to change the location of the speakers, which is a very helpful and smart opportunity. I'm wondering also, as part of the consideration for mitigating the use of the PA, wouldn't Jesuit reduce the PA requirement or use if they are going to be able to use their radio station to stream those games so that the PA can go into their radio station and not have to go out into the neighborhood? Seems like a very low-hanging fruit kind of solution for what would give us some lower blood pressures. Another thing we're looking at is, you know, the safety, health and safety of playing in the heat is something we totally agree with, not letting the students come into risk for playing in the heat. And so we'd like to make that a restriction, that they don't use the stadiums and fields during the peak temperature times. We don't, we don't, since we're going to participate in this process of moving and shifting practices and games to the evening to alleviate that issue, we think it's important that we maintain that safety and not allow students to practice and do their games during those peak hours since they have the evenings. And, you know, obviously, we don't want to see them backfill into more and more activities. If they're going to be able to play later, then they shouldn't be able to also play during the heat with the younger students and practices and so forth. And Jesuit did say in their presentation that they're adding additional personnel to include safety officers to monitor parking and traffic. And I think that's really fantastic, but it would be better for the neighborhood if it included officers for off-site monitoring of traffic and parking and neighborhood safety. As I was reading the protocols, the safety officers are onsite patrolling and not off-site where all of the neighbors have our concerns. We'd also like to see the monitoring extended for 10 years. A three-year monitoring is just not enough to give us comfort that there's going to be compliance. And we'd like to make sure that those reports are going to be available for us. And lastly, I would say that when Rio Americano gets its evening lights, which they have now in planning process, and they have their 2,000 to 3,000 vehicles in combination with Jesuit event vehicles, American River Drive is not going to be able to accommodate that. And so I, I know this is a Jesuit project, but the reality is we already have a lot of overload with Rio Americano traffic and that should be really recognized as part of this project. So thank you for taking the time to consider what the neighborhood is concerned about. I've written extensive letters, you've all received those, but we're asking Jesuit to do not just the minimum, but be a good neighbor and do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Is there any other member of the appellate team that would like to address the board
Good afternoon, I'm Barbara Dugall. I am the appellant, one of them. And first I'd just like to state thank you to the supervisors who met with us, Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Serna and Frost. We appreciate that so much. We also want to thank representatives from Jesuit, Matt Kiesling and Mary Tigert for meeting with us also. We have 61 signatures of a petition that had requested the board's assistance and in support of the mitigation measures and the conditions, additional mitigation measures and conditions that we put forward. So there are 61 people at least in the neighborhood, many more that are impacted. And we're just asking for just a little bit more time in order to maybe negotiate with Jesuit to get a few additional permit conditions included in the permit so that it will bring further relief for the neighborhood. The issues that were, are still, you know, concerned about with noise, and we think that the, the additional conditions that have been hopefully placed into the permit, well, that will go a long way. So we're very hopeful on that end. But parking and traffic is still, you know, a big concern for the neighborhood. We've been told to, to call if there's a problem with illegal parking, such as parking around the corner or blocking a crosswalk. We call and no one comes. And I understand the sheriff, the CHP, parking enforcement, they're all busy. But we're the ones that are left having to deal with the issue and we have nowhere else to go. So we're asking you, as our representatives, to help us to make it more an enforceable agreement that will help us to get things remedied. It's the same with noise. If you file a complaint with the noise abatement, they send a letter and then it's up to that whoever receives that letter to, to try to remedy the situation. I spoke to the noise abatement department at the county. They have no enforcement. They're, they're, they've said that straight out to me, that they have no enforcement capability. So we're looking for more conditions to make, make, ensure that it's enforceable. And I think that the condition I did not receive as the appellant, I did not receive those conditions that were just put up on the board. So I can't, I think they look good and I think that they will go a long way in helping us, but I don't, I didn't receive them until I saw them up on the board. I've received nothing. The only thing I received from the county is a copy of a draft denial or a denial of the, of the, our appeal. So I'm disappointed in that. I did submit photos. I sent a PowerPoint with photos about parking and traffic issues. Okay, great, so you got those. Okay, that's just an example. So noise and parking, and I'll reiterate what Elizabeth stated about the three years. We think that it should be, you know, 10 years of reporting. We put that in our request to the county. We didn't, I didn't see a response from the county staff as to that. I saw some responses to some of the permit conditions and the mitigation. Some of those were responded to, some weren't. Let's see what else here. And then also, I'm a little bit confused because we had, we had requested that Jesuit comply with their protocols, not just at night, but also during the daytime, because there is a, the conflicts are happening now with parking when there is multiple events going on. There's swimming, there's baseball, there's, you know, numerous events. And so we would like to see that those protocols are followed during daytime events also, not during nighttime events, just nighttime events. And I'm a little bit confused. Again, I didn't get to read everything about the, the signs. I heard a couple of different things. I heard the A-frame signs to be put up, like, don't park here, but that's just like a suggestion. There's no enforceability with that. It just says, hey, don't park here, but it doesn't say you can't park here, you can't be towed, you can't be sighted. So that's a question that I have. And that's a question that many, many, many of the neighbors have too, is that those signs are great, but it doesn't prevent anybody from parking there. We had all...
We had also put forward about the temporary no parking signs. And to go back to, on the parking issue, people on Jacob signed the petition recently, and they submitted it to the county transportation department. The county did a car count. They did it during spring break, and they denied the permit to get no parking signs because there wasn't enough traffic. So it's just like we every, we're trying to get help. Well, that's what we want. We want help, we want assistance for the ongoing, continuing nuisance that's occurring. And so that's what we're asking for. So, let's see here. And then also, I did not see a response because we have, we provided an issue of summary, summary of issues and concerns as part of, I guess, attachment number 14. When staff responded to the comments on the final EIR, some of those comments were determined not to be related to an environmental impact, but they were provided for transparency and decision-makers consideration. And those 28 items are of extreme concern to the community, and we've never received a response from that, that I have been able to find in going through all of the attachments. So, you know, we'd really like to see, see, see an answer to those because they're pretty broad and important to the community. And what I'd like to ask, because I know that the recommendation is for denial today, and I would ask that you give us a little bit more time to try to, you know, some of the negotiations that we've had with Jesuit have been very positive, and we think that with a little bit more time, that we could sit down, small group, and just kind of hammer out some of these, these last little details. And I think that that would go a long way in, you know, fostering community and fostering goodwill amongst everybody, because I'm telling you, the people in the neighborhood are very, you know, yeah. So there's a lot of support, there's a lot of concern, and we just want to all enjoy our houses, enjoy our yards, you know, enjoy walking in the neighborhood, not hearing the speaker on the parkway. So there's, you know, it's a lot. And so I do appreciate the things that Jesuit has committed to, and so, and to make sure that all those, you know, commitments are incorporated into the permit would be, so that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you. I have members of the board punched in. Are you looking to speak to this particular speaker, or if there's another representative, would you like to wait? Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to hear from staff and Kimber, I don't know if that's you or someone else, about some of the testimony we just heard relative to not or seeing some of these conditions for the very first time. I would like to understand when the list of conditions that are part of that PowerPoint were first made public. And then I'd also like to understand, as a matter of standard process for an appellate, do we provide, kind of, or do we go over and above just listing the agenda documents on the Thursday before the Tuesday board meeting, because they have paid for their appeal process to go forward? So regardless if it's Kimber or someone else, maybe our attorney, but I'd like to understand kind of what happened in terms of when the appellate was able to access the current list of conditions.
Supervisor Serna, Todd Smith, I'll start with a response. Perhaps Kimber can chime in as necessary. The majority of the conditions were available when we went to the planning commission, as well as the draft EIR was available publicly at the dates that Kimber identified as part of her presentation, which included all of the secret mitigation measures as well. The only conditions that were new and made available this morning were those four that Kimber went over from the overhead as part of her presentation.
And the product of, those four conditions are a product of what? Last-minute discussions with Supervisor Desmond's office or?
Yeah, last-minute discussions among staff, the applicant, reading through the public comments, obviously, which are numerous, trying to address any concerns that we could ferret out that weren't already previously addressed in the conditions previously published.
Okay. So it sounds like this has just been moving faster and faster in terms of the conditions that you would, we would offer the appellate. And in real time, unfortunately, it's, it's kind of the nature of the beast that in order to try and satisfy some of those concerns, we're, we're working as we're, or flying the plane as we're building it, it sounds like.
That is generally accurate. I think I would also add a bit of an explanation as to, you know, some of the questions we got. Obviously, I think one of the members of the appellate team testified that they send extensive letters, and that is absolutely correct. We don't have the ability to respond to every single point over and over. Part of our process is to develop the staff report, put together, I think it's attachment number 15, which hits on the major points and kind of consolidated concerns, if I'm characterizing that accurately. And obviously, we don't provide our staff report to any member of the public, whether it's an appellate, an applicant, et cetera, in advance of it being published. That is the sanctity of the process. It's a slippery slope to do otherwise.
Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I wanted to ask a question relating to the traffic issues. I remember years ago, when we were working with Mercy San Juan Hospital and problems with parking behind the, behind the hospital in the residential areas, and it was a huge problem. And in the end, we solved it with permit parking, whereby people were actually going to get a permit from the residences. So they got, it kind of solved the problem, really. It was permit parking only. I wonder if that would be an option to get control of the traffic situation and improve the way they're parking on the streets.
Yeah. My understanding of how permit parking works is that, oh, sorry, Kimber Gutierrez with Sacramento County, is that it has to be initiated by residents. So all the residents have to agree on whatever stretch of parking it's going to be to pursue that permit, only parking or no parking, and work with Department of Transportation to do that. So it sounded like some counts were done, and it sounded like that was the correct avenue, but maybe it needs to be relooked at and counted at a different time, yeah.
Seemed to quiet down the situation over by San Juan Hospital.
Yeah. I think that the same goes for like any traffic calming measures too, like speed bumps, things like that. It needs to be resident-initiated.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up on that really quick? I just was looking at Dave and Todd, because there was a question about the enforceability of these temporary no parking. Can you clarify that? My understanding is that is enforceable.
Yeah, and if I may, I'd asked Lupe to come up from DOT, and he can answer that question, and then may also weigh in on what Supervisor Frost had mentioned as well.
Good afternoon. Lupe Rodriguez with the Transportation Department. And so to get a little further into the question about the barricades with a street use permit, my thought on that is that just installing the barricade or the barricade with a sign at the entrance to the community probably won't be enforceable. I think it would discourage a lot of people from parking there, but from an enforceability, I think it would have to go to the next step to allow parking enforcement, whoever's enforcing it, to show which streets are actually being restricted by placing some additional signs within the neighborhood on the streets that is intended to be, right? And so I think that would be, what would be required, is to just take that next step and just add some additional signs on the streets that are of concern. But that would apply for both event parkers and also people living in those homes. So it would apply to everybody on that street.
So Lupe, would that be permanent signage that would affect parking day in, day out, not just for the event?
Well, if you, you could do it in two ways. You could do it with a street use permit and do it for the events, right? Or you could also look at it from a day-to-day perspective, if it's a daily occurrence and residents are okay with restricting parking in front of their homes, but it wouldn't be just one home here and one home there. It would be the entire block that would need to be in support of it before we even consider it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Lupe. I appreciate it. That's all we have from the board at this time, so we will hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Chair Kennedy, Supervisors Matt Kiesling of Taylor Wiley &amp; Kiesling here today on behalf of Jesuit High School. Before I get started on our presentation, which unfortunately does have a quick PowerPoint, but we'll try to make it fast, I'd like to introduce Chris Allen. Chris is the new president of Jesuit High School, and he'd like to just say a few words about the school. And if we could start the PowerPoint, he's going to cover the first two slides.
Great. Chris Allen with Jesuit High School. First of all, thank you Chairman Kennedy and to the rest of the Board of Supervisors, if I can give you some peace of mind. The people dressed mostly in red behind me are just here as a general show of support. They are not queued up for general comment at the end, so.
You're winning points, sir.
There you go. I am nothing if not terse. So first of all, let me express my gratitude to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for putting this matter on the agenda today. Thank you also for making the time to speak with many of us in the chamber today. I'm very grateful for your generosity and your willingness to listen and help us get to a good decision today moving forward. I moved to Carmichael a year ago after spending, so I'm not that new, a year ago after spending nearly 20 years in Palm Desert, California, building a Jesuit school from the ground up. This entailed everything from recruiting students, teachers, building systems, and growing a facility that included classrooms, a gymnasium, fields, tennis courts, and all that goes with those facilities. We built that school in a neighborhood, and over the last 20 years, that school is as much a next-door neighbor to the people who live in Ivy Ranch Country Club as it is just another school that lines Cook Street. Just over 60 years ago, a group of parents and benefactors found the land at Fair Oaks Boulevard and Jacob Lane and thought that it would be a perfect place to build a Jesuit High School for educating young men. So they did. And eventually, others saw what used to be just open fields as the perfect place to build their homes, raise their families, and educate their children. As the neighborhood grew, the educational landscape around it grew with it. These things grew together. Kids grew up in homes, got educated at the schools, and went home to their dinner tables and families. For the last several decades, we have summarized the goal of Jesuit education in the phrase, "Forming men for and with others." We do this in our curricular offerings, we do this in our co-curricular offerings, in chem labs, in dress rehearsals, in mock trials, on retreats, and in after-school athletic programs. It is a holistic approach. Everything we do is toward that goal of forming these young men into being men for and with others, first and foremost. Ultimately, our goal is to partner with their families to grow them into good citizens, entrepreneurs, restaurant owners, legislators, doctors, no offense, even lawyers. We want them to grow up to be good neighbors wherever they end up living. Jesuit High School has been a responsible, and we think, I think, a responsive neighbor to the people who've built homes, families, and a community of neighbors around it. We've been dedicated to monitoring and mitigating the unavoidable impacts of living near a school to the best of our ability. It is my realistic expectation that Jesuit High School will continue to proceed this way into the future. Thank you very much again for hearing our matter today, and I'm grateful for your time. I'll turn it over to the lawyer.
Thanks, Chris. Supervisors, I have a presentation here, but I'm going to truncate that a little bit to dig into the issues we've been discussing. Just to run through those, Chris mentioned, Jesuit High School has been in this neighborhood for 61 years. It has great academics, also fantastic athletics. Supervisor Serna, they beat me several times at that field as well. Of the folks on that top 20 football programs in the region, Jesuit High School is the only one there on that list that does not have a lit stadium. It is the only school at which football games are happening on Saturday afternoons, which is why we're here today before you requesting stadium lights. The reasons are several. This is our top five reasons for asking for the lights. I will let speakers indicate why they think it's important. And our anticipated lighting usage, which I think many of you saw in your packet, and if you look at this closely, I don't have a laser pointer, I don't think, oh, I do, look at that. The majority of the uses under the lights are practices. And you can see that those practices occur right now after school, and what the lights will make possible is simply moving those to be slightly later in the evening to give students time to get out of class, to get settled, and then get out to practice. It backs things up about a half an hour. Other than that, the major shift is football. We're really talking football here, where we're going to move games from Saturday from 10 to 4 to go to Friday nights from 5 to 10. And that is going to have an impact on our neighbors, and we are not blind to that fact, and we know that it will be a burden upon them, and thus, we've tried our best to address to the greatest extent possible those impacts. And let me jump into that. When we went to the CPAC two and a half years ago now, the CPAC made it clear that we needed to go out and do more outreach. We have held extensive meetings with the neighbors and listened. The primary concerns were light and glare, pedestrian safety, parking management in the neighborhood, and event noise. Light and glare, I think, has been addressed by all of you. This is top-of-the-line technology. There is no light spillage off-site. Truthfully, these lights, once you step off the track, you're in, you're in dark. Our analysis says that when you're on American River Boulevard, the light from the moon is stronger than the light from the stadium. So we feel good about the lights themselves. When it comes down to safety, the analysis did say, shifting events to the night, there are students that are dropped off on American River Drive or park in the neighborhoods. They walk to the field, they will now be crossing the street in the dark. So we are being asked to install a crosswalk at Tennyson and American River Drive that also has the lights associated with it, so you can push the button. You have a lit crosswalk that'll be safe for students to cross before and after dark. And we noticed in the context of this that Jacob Lane and American River Drive, though a stop sign, has never had a crosswalk. So we're also being required to put in crosswalks there, which we think will make the whole neighborhood a lot safer and a safer place for bikes and peds. Additionally, through this process, and you've heard about this already, we were asked to look at ways to implement both safer activity in the neighborhood as well as impact parking. Jesuit created the nighttime protocol document, which is being imposed upon us as a condition of approval. We will be required to utilize this for all-night events. It does include statements such as, "Volunteers will direct onsite traffic and monitor the activity on the perimeter of the campus, including the connecting streets." We not only put those A-frames out at connecting streets to tell people to park on campus, but we have parents with bright vests and look like they're landing an airplane telling people to go and park on campus, as you can see in that middle picture. And we implemented these protocols during last year's temporary lighting events. We had two nighttime events, max capacity, and here are some pictures of the surrounding streets. It was effective. I think, as you've heard here tonight, these are public streets. People do have a right to park on them. What we don't want to do is limit the neighbor's ability to get on their own street, park on their own street, have their friends over, park in front of their house, but we also recognize a responsibility as a good neighbor to try and get our traffic onto campus. And we believe that we can do this, and we look forward to reporting back to you through that annual reporting process, just how successful that is being. With event noise, this is a little bit tougher nut to crack. I think, as you heard here tonight, we do have a mitigation measure that requires us to put a limiter on the PA, so that if I'm talking like this into the microphone, or I'm screaming, "Touchdown," it's always going to come out at the same volume, and it's not going to exceed county noise standards. But we cannot put a similar limiter on students and crowds or on the band. And so when a touchdown is scored, I, we experienced it the night we were out there at the night events. It is loud. People cheer for a football game, but that noise quickly dissipates. And again, we would hope that we can be good neighbors and try to minimize to the extent possible that impact by not using the PA when we do not need to, by limiting the volume of the PA when we don't need to, and limiting the brightness of the lights when it's unnecessary to have full light brightness. This is just, again, reflecting on that noise mitigation measure. It does result in what we found to be about a 3 decibel reduction in sound, which if Paul Ballard was here, he would tell you, is what is perceptible to the human ear. So you would, if you lived nearby, actually be able to perceive that reduction in volume from your backyard. Which leads me to my next point, which is, Jesuit has been engaged in talking to the neighbors and listening to the neighbors. They have raised several valid points that we have sought to address and want to continue to address. The mitigation measure that was introduced, or the condition of approval introduced here earlier today, is a requirement that Jesuit continue to host its quarterly Good Neighbor meetings. We are committed to that. There's one tomorrow morning at 8:30, if you'd like to come and get doughnuts. That will be going- That will be going on tomorrow morning to continue this discussion. But as an outgrowth of this, we had one-on-ones in living rooms, we had small group meetings, we had held coffees, we met at my office with the appellants, and they've raised several valid concerns and points, which have resulted in real changes. We've added additional security to the campus. We've committed to end dances earlier so that pickups aren't going on after 10:00 PM. We've implemented a Good Neighbor hotline with a phone number where you can actually call during event and get a real, live person on the other end of that call. We're hosting quarterly meetings that we fluctuate, 2 in the AM, 2 in the PM, so that depending on your work schedule, you can at least make two of those meetings per year. And we're focusing on getting student drop-off to be off of Jacob Lane and onto campus. Additionally, we would request, as the applicant, and I do apologize, these have not been made public before now today, that we did discuss them with the appellants as well as provide them to staff, but as the applicants, we would like to impose upon ourselves two more conditions of approval, if it is to the acceptance of the Board of Supervisors. The first one is that we publish a quarterly calendar of events that will be occurring outside on Jesuit's athletic fields, so that our neighbors can understand what is going to happen on campus, so that they can plan their lives accordingly. I believe it was Ms. Dugall that made the statement, "I want to be able to have a birthday party in my backyard, I want to be able to have people over." And we agree that it should be reasonable for her to know when that can happen and when, when there might be a conflicting noise event next door, right? So, as a good neighbor, we would like to impose that upon ourselves, and we will publish that calendar, email it to our neighbors, as well as hard copy mail to any neighbor that doesn't want to receive it through email. And that will also include the line, so that people can call in if they have questions on the hotline. The second one here is that the project applicant will install a stop sign at the southerly exit out of campus before getting onto American River Drive. We heard concerns about public safety, about vehicles exiting campus, and conflicts with pedestrians walking on the sidewalk. We would be happy to install a stop sign on Jesuit's property to make sure that students and families are stopping, coming to a complete stop before leaving the site. That being said, wanted to thank all of you. We would request that you deny this appeal. And with that, I'm happy to open it up to questions, and at some point, we would also like to have a discussion about the new four conditions of approval that were proposed.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for the presentation. I have to admit, I did not come over the EIR with a magnifying glass, but as it relates to noise, and maybe this is the wrong assumption, but was there analysis that was completed that looked at the seasonality of football? So, in other words, you stressed at the beginning of your presentation, this is really about football. Well, football is played in the winter, the fall, the winter. Granted, the, you know, our winters are going to be warmer, you know, at the beginning of the season, and cooler at the end of the season, which means that in some respects, the surrounding neighborhood and neighbors who wish to enjoy their, to recreate outdoors in their own backyards, that's going to, that's going to vary with temperature and weather conditions and that kind of thing. Did the EIR go down to that level of detail to really explore sound levels and what it means indoors with dual panes versus outdoor, you know, assuming that most of us probably don't want to be using our backyards when it's raining or when it's 40 degrees?
Yeah. I will try to answer that completely. We did do noise analysis. This map indicates the locations at which we set up noise monitoring equipment. Ballard Acoustic did the noise monitoring. We first monitored, well, the monitoring equipment was out there for two weeks. The reason for that is what we did was recorded the first football game of the season, also happened to be the airshow at Mather Field, and so there were some interesting noise spikes that happened in the analysis. We decided in the interest of making sure we had a good base analysis, we left them out there another week to capture another home football game. It also was there in the middle of the night, so we know what the ambient noise level is, as well as the noise level when we have a crowd and a football game taking place. What the noise analysis came back and found was that there were significant noise impacts at 1 and 2, which are not surprising, given their proximity to the stadium. And I think there was a couple instances of a significant noise impact at 3. What the analysis did is Paul dug in, and he was able to slow it down, is to hear the spikes. On average, during a football game, the noise levels are below county standards. So, the noise impact in your backyard is not exceeding that 70 dBA. In fact, it was well below that at several points, until you had the spike events. And the spike events are touchdowns. It simply is, it's a touchdown, it is a loud, noticeable cheer, and then it falls off again.
So, is the noise now, fair to say, is the noise analysis somewhat conservative because you didn't even bother to test indoors?
That is correct. We did get permission from the neighbor, so we tested in backyards, so that we were taking into consideration the fence.
Sure.
But we did not test inside a house, which obviously would have the added protection of the walls and the, and the windows.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, Mr. Kiesling, is that it?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now move to public comment. How many do we have signed up? We have quite a few signed up, 49, no, that's item 49.
24.
Thank goodness. 24.
Funny guy.
Okay.
Funny guy.
Yeah. Here's what I'm gonna, I'm going to say, is that in, by no means does this board ever want to curtail public comment, and we value what we hear. Also, I would like you to take into consideration that, to the best of my knowledge, none of us are colorblind, and we're pretty aware of where this audience is on this particular matter. So, I'm going to start by asking, it's a show of hands for those who are here to support the project as the, as it's been proposed. Raise your hand, please. Okay, thank you very much. That, that gives a pretty good visual, so I will say that and lead into my admonishment that please do what you can to refrain from just repeating what has already been said, in that we, we are now quite aware of where you stand on the project. With that, we will be doing one minute of public testimony per member of the public, and Madam Clerk, please call the first member of the public.
Hey, Hayden, and if you're going to make a public comment, if you could start forming a line, that would be great. If you see your name on the list in that order. And if you stand in between the mics, you'll sound the best. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Hayden, and I'm here in support of Jesuit's stadium lighting project. I just finished my freshman year at Jesuit High School, and I'm playing on the JV team this year, and I'm really excited to continue to be a part of Jesuit's stellar athletics program. I have a clear vision as to what the future at Jesuit will look like when lights are installed for our football field. Having lights for Marauder Stadium at Jesuit would transform not only the school community, but the greater Sacramento neighboring community as well. First off, hosting night games would bring everyone together in a safe and enjoyable environment. Imagine Friday nights, everyone getting loud and cheering during the game under those bright lights. It would really make the Jesuit community come together as a whole, with students, parents, family members, and neighbors coming out to support the school. Also, night games would give all of us chances to make memories with other people that will, that will last a lifetime. Having lights installed for our football field would also make it so much easier for fans and supporters of all ages to come watch their family members play. Last year, I played on the freshman team, and we had numerous games that were played in the 100-plus degree weather. For many of those games, my teammates, grandparents were not able to attend during blazing hot days.
Hayden, can you wrap up your comments, sweetie?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not once has she called me sweetie, by the way.
As I look forward to my next three years at Jesuit, I know it will become increasingly important to maintain balance between school and athletics. Having 19 games with lights will, and practices will allow me and my fellow teammates to play in the evening, and we will not miss as much class time.
Thank you, Hayden.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, sir, you have one minute.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Troy Rousey. My family lives .5 miles from Jesuit High School. Yes, that's less than a half a mile from the school. We moved from the Natomas area and into our home just over 13 years ago. We are property taxpayers, my wife works in the Arden Carmichael area, we are heavily involved in the community, and we love our neighborhood. Frankly, I was shocked when I found out Jesuit High School and neighboring schools did not have lights on their fields. Growing up in the great state of Montana, Friday night football and other evening sport events were the essence of all things high school sports. After moving into our home, we have attended numerous sporting events throughout the years at Jesuit in Rio. The day games at Jesuit tend to be during the extreme heat with limited friends, family, student body, and fans present during the games. Last year, during one of the football games, we witnessed an opposing coach get taken off the field for heat exhaustion. In stark contrast to the day events, last year, the two night Jesuit football games with temporary lights were well-attended. The games had a strong community feel, a vibrant student body, and the entire fanbase was comprised of everything from young children to grandparents. Jesuit must be awarded the opportunity to have the evening sporting events. We all know that global warming is real and that the earth is only getting hotter. High school sports are magnetic in their communities and bring much more benefit to students than just the game. High school sports gets kids up and moving and gets them off their devices. Beyond the athletes on the field, high school sports...
Can you please wrap up, sir?
Mr. Troy, can you please wrap up your comments?
Yep. As a taxpayer and a close neighbor to the Jesuit and a community advocate, my family strongly encourages to approve this plan and allow Jesuits to turn on the lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Just a reminder that you have one minute, and that little flashing thing down there will get, when it gets red, if you could just wrap it up. I hate to, to interrupt you.
Good afternoon, I'm Megan Sands, I'm a rising senior at St. Francis Catholic High School. I've been attending Jesuit football games since I was in grade school and braved the crazy Saturday games with my family to watch my brother play all four years until he graduated from Jesuit in 2022. Now, I'm at the games with my classmates and local friends to cheer on Jesuit from the student section as much as possible. But being at Saturday games is hard, as we juggle our own spo, sports and activities, and this past season, many of us had conflicts as Saturday games fell at the same time as the SAT college board exams. With Friday night lights, the games will create everlasting memories. Many of my friends live directly across from Jesuit, and we walk to and from the football games together. We love the community and are proud to support Jesuit. We have heard from a small vocal group of neighbors who are worried that students at the games might walk on their lawns, litter, or park in front of their driveways. But I'm here to say that that's not us. Students at St. Francis and Jesuit are neighbors too, and we are good students who are respectful of our community. We know, and our deans remind us, that good behavior is a must and attending events is a privilege, but more so, we want to serve our community and be good citizens. I hope you think of all of the faces of the students who are here and vote yes to turn on the lights. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next speaker?
Nancy.
I'm Nancy Harvey, and I'm here to support Jesuit and our relationship.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Tom.
I'm Tom Harvey. We've got two grandsons that go to Jesuit. We need the lights.
Got it.
I'm here to read the letter from somebody else, but she wants the lights too, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Next speaker, please. We have JP Mullin, followed by Kirk Casigian and Bob Price.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is JP Mullin, and I'm an upcoming sophomore at Jesuit High School. I'm participating in varsity lacrosse and JV football this year, and I'm here to advocate for the approval to build Lightstar Stadium. If you ever came out to our field at the end of a school day in the spring or winter, you would see our lacrosse team practicing in a small muddy field with very little space for us at all. This was because by the time our soccer team had finished up their practice, it would be too dark for us. And on game days, we would have to miss our last period of school to ensure that we could get through our games before the sun went down. As a football player, these lights would be very impactful. Right now, the temperatures are reaching around 102 degrees, and on the turf, it's 112. If this meeting was not going on currently, we would be practicing in that heat. Temperatures like this are normal throughout the summer, and in order to compete with the schools around us that have lights and can schedule later practices, we must endure the heat. The lights, however, would help our athletes out with many of these problems. Our practices could be moved from that small field onto the turf at a later time. Our academics would not be punished, as we would not have to worry about missing a lecture or test due to our early game times, and our football team would be able to play in much cooler weather, as we'd be able to push practices back into the colder hours of the night.
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, and not in the midst of the blazing hot afternoons. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, JP, appreciate it.
Good afternoon, my name is Kirk Casigian, I want to keep my points to whatever everyone else has already covered, but I do want to say that I'm a neighbor about two blocks to the east, and just be clear that the appellant has good points, and there are many of them, but they do not represent the entire neighborhood. There are many of us that support the project that are neighbors, and have, you know, I went to the game, actually, two, there was two evening games last year, I went to one, stayed home for one. In both instances, people parked in front of our home, they were respectful, they didn't leave trash, they left when the game was over, it was fine. The game I didn't attend, I could hear the cheers from my house, made me wish I was there. It was great. The final point, I am a coach at Jesuit, and as a parent of a player who plays on the field and a coach who coaches there, the health and safety risks are real, and having that extra time in the evening to avoid some of these challenges around heat on, on a turf field is worthy of consideration as well. Support the project and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Casigian. Bob Price.
Hi, I'm Bob Price, I have these notes prepared, but I'm just going to leave them folded up here. I live across the street from Jesuit, and I also wanted to express that Jesuit's always been a good neighbor for us. We support them in this endeavor, and we hope that you vote yes by 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Craig Zarro.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing us to have this conversation. Like everybody else, I've got a speech, and we're going to try to streamline this along. From a neighborhood standpoint, I think all of us in Sacramento sacrifice a little bit, whether it's fireworks on a Friday night from the River Cats, fireworks at 10:00 PM for two weeks at the state fair, the planes flying over from the Capitol Air Show, the congestion of holiday traffic stretching for 30, 45 days in East Sac or Arden Park. These are all sacrificial events that make us a better community, and we are talking about just a few nights in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Delvin Natalle.
Good afternoon, my name is Delvin Natalle. I recently graduated from Jesuit, but while I was there, I played football all four years. My favorite memory from my senior season happened during our home opener under the lights. I was jogging back from the coin toss, and my eyes were locked on the student section, and I had the biggest smile on my face. There was a great amount of people there, way more than I'd been accustomed to with the Saturday afternoon attendance, and I really felt the love and support of the Jesuit community in that moment. When I think about it, I realize that every field sport athlete deserves to know what that feels like, but it wouldn't only benefit, benefit athletics, though. It benefits student life as a whole. Usually, students have to wait until winter to watch athletic games in the form of basketball. Having lights would allow students to watch games as soon as they came back from break. With that being said, on behalf of athletes and supporters at Jesuit High School, I'd like you to please consider turning on the lights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Delvin. Appreciate you coming down. Jim Donahue.
Yes, I, I'm an attorney, I know I can't say anything less than that, so, as much as I'd love to be called sweetie.
I resemble that comment. Chris Lee, please.
I'm in support of the project, especially the heat elements.
Thank you, sir. Chris Kalmbach.
Hi there, my name's Chris Kalmbach, I live .1 miles, there's the clock, I live .1 miles away. Thank you for having me this afternoon. Our local Carmichael community is truly exceptional. We are blessed to live in a community that places a strong priority on safety, economic freedom, and empowering local businesses. The very core of these priorities is investment into smart growth opportunities to ensure that the local neighborhood continues to strive. Small businesses in the neighborhood rely on commerce. Real estate developers will continue to regard Carmichael as an example of how to invest for the long, long term. Our health partners will look at the lighting project as we empower the leaders of tomorrow to actually physically collaborate together. Just last March, Hiram Johnson High School completed its beautiful new football stadium, which included new lighting. The residents of Tahoe Park were ecstatic about the public investment. Sacramento Unified School Board member said, "Investments such as this are long overdue for our neighborhood and for our school population. This beautiful new amenity is a welcome new addition to the campus." Clearly, they understand the big picture and realize why investment today pays off for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kalmbach. Thank you, Mr. Kalmbach. Mike Rockenstein.
That will make it quick. Chair Kennedy and members of the Board of Supervisors. First of all, I want to thank the Planning Environmental Review Team, specifically Kimber. This has been the, I'm currently the Chair of the Carmichael Planning Advisory Council, and this issue has been before us, as indicated, since April of 2022. So, 26 months have passed. This has been a long process. It really was not only about the lights, but all the ancillary issues impacting the request for the use permit. And I want to thank Jesuit High School for continuing to establish that good neighbor policy, because that was something that I, back in April, and several of my fellow colleagues had requested them to do, and as well as have the completion of the EIR before taking action on this. So, I want to thank Planning Environmental Review for that, as well as the Jesuit community. I also want to continue to request the Jesuit community to continue to establish and reach out and be good neighbors for the, not just in the surrounding areas, but also outside within the Carmichael community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Craig Johns.
Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Craig Johns. I'm here speaking for myself, but also for my wife, Kate, who's here, and my son, Jackson, who's a rising junior. We don't live near Jesuit, but we do live in a community where we live about 500 yards from a very large school, about four times the size of Jesuit. And yes, we have seen a lot of traffic that impacts our neighborhood, our getting to and from work, getting to and from the neighborhoods around us. We hear the noise from the football games and all the other events that occur there, but we don't really mind, because we realize that it's going to go away soon. We know that the traffic is just going to be short term. And we hear the sounds of the high school activities. We know that we, not our children, but other children are up there living life. They're away from their screens and their electronics, and they're enjoying being with each other as community. So, it is an impact to our lives, but nonetheless, it's something that we can all get by with. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in behalf of us.
Thank you, Mr. Johns. Appreciate it. Alex Torres. Welcome back.
Chair and members, Alex Torres again. I have the opportunity and the pleasure to wear a few hats in the community. First, the day job as a policy advocate at Brownstein Hyatt, president of the Harry S. Truman Democratic Club of Sacramento, but I'm very much proud of my hat. Class of 2012, Jesuit High School. So, I would speak in that capacity today and urge strong support for this. I think you have a great applicant who's done everything they can to take as many concessions as possible. So, again, reiterate, my support for the project would align my comments with those of previous speakers. I know after a football game, I'm going to go get a Willys burger and support some other small businesses. So, I think that there's an economic impact here. There was a reference to some of the smart growth development that this can represent. And it's also a great place, a gathering place for a community, and we need that now more than ever, so would strongly urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Bernardo Hubbard.
My mom's watching, so I'm not going to relinquish my time. Hi, Mom. I'd like to tell you guys that, as I look back on my high school career, there's no better feeling than throwing four touchdowns in one game under the lights. I'd love to tell you that, but it's not true. I'm not a jock like these guys. And what I can tell you is that when I first started this effort, you know, it's for selfish reasons. My son is a football player, unlike his dad. And also, my father, who's 86 years old, just had a birthday yesterday, he can't come to the games on Saturday for risk of heat stroke. But through this process and the leadership at Jesuit, I've learned that this is not about, while those reasons are valid, it's not about that. It's about the greater good and the community as a whole. So, I've grown a lot through this process, and I just wanted to thank the school and the community, and this is going to bring us all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Gaylord Moulds.
My name is Gaylord Moulds, and we've been enjoying our home on Piccadilly Circle for 12 years. We've always enjoyed having Jesuit as a neighbor. We've never had any problem with Jesuit until the PA system went in, and that changed things a little bit, and it's been kind of an ongoing struggle with them. But we have always gone to their good neighbor meetings and appreciate that Jesuit has those meetings. As we can move on, I am happy to hear about the fact that people are talking about the PA system and maybe reducing the level in some way, because it's extremely loud. We hear it. Also, Friday nights, we usually have friends or family over, so it's a time we like to entertain. If the weather's nice, we do it outdoors. I'm a little concerned about parking down our street during the nighttime games, and hopefully, that can be resolved, so when people come to our place, they have a place to park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have Barbara Dugall on there, but she already spoke. Okay, thank you. Sue Spurber.
Thanks for hearing me again. As undoubtedly the oldest person in the room, I want to tell you that I'm probably the oldest neighbor of Jesuits. When we were looking for a lot to buy and raise our family, what neighborhood had the best schools? Jesuit was already there, had a wonderful reputation, as did Del Deo School, as did Rio Americano. So, what better place for us to build a home and raise our family than in a neighborhood that had the best schools? It could only enhance the value of our property. We are still there 55 years later, and in all those 55 years of being Jesuit's neighbor, they have been the best neighbors around. We're on Piccadilly Circle. We border Jesuit. They're actually better neighbors than some of the ones that live in houses around me.
Thank you.
So, I trust them.
And we were doing so well. Not the prior speaker, presumably.
So, I trust them as neighbors. I'm looking forward to those lights, those Friday night lights. I'd love to see them before my 80th birthday in June, so these kids can celebrate under the lights.
Thank you, Sue. And don't sell yourself short. I think Supervisor Desmond's giving you a run for your money. William Peck, please.
Thank you. I'm three blocks away from Jesuit. I'm not one of the Sue's bad neighbors. I actually support Jesuit. Both my sons graduated from Jesuit, and I've been a financial supporter, making donations as recently as the past year. However, I think Jesuit can do more to mitigate the effects of these lights. If they really are doing this to protect the health and safety of their fans and their players, they should restrict the Friday or the night games to August, September, mid-October, when temperature's a problem, not hold night games in November, December, late October, when that's not necessary. Another thing, if they really care about restricting parking on our streets, they should be compelled to pay an officer of the county who is authorized to cite illegal parking. I think these mitigation efforts could help the good neighbor relationship between the neighbors and the school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ross Thompson.
Okay, we'll move on to Eric.
Ross.
Ross. I got you.
Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. My son goes to Jesuit. I live in District 5. My mom lives in District 4. My brother lives in District 3. They've all sent letters in of support. They want this to happen. Friday night lights, football games for these boys is a lifeblood. The events are lifeblood to our communities. And depriving them for so long of this opportunity, let's move forward. Let's turn on the lights. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Todd Spurber.
Can you lower it for me now? So, the lady that was speaking earlier is my mom. I also have lived in the neighborhood for 55 years, my entire life. Used to live on Piccadilly. I now live immediately north of the school. I could throw a golf ball and hit Chris's house very easily. I want to make it perfectly clear, I am a Rio Americano Raider, not a Jesuit fan. No, no, no offense. But the point is, Rio should have lights, and so should Jesuit. It makes it a better neighborhood, a better community. All of my neighbors, I don't want to say all of my neighbors, the majority of my neighbors, we talk about this all the time, they want lights in. They support it. I realize there are some neighbors that don't. The majority of neighbors in the neighborhood support this project, and I promise you, if Rio comes up for lights, I'll be in front of you again speaking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Finally, Jim Gillum.
Chair Kennedy, members of the Board, Jim Gillum, here to speak in favor of the project. Want to just point out a few things, not to be repetitive from other speakers, but the process that this project's been through is exhaustive. I heard the speaker from the appellant ask for more time. You know, this has been on the docket since 2021. I sat through the EIR comment period hearing, looked at the document and how the traffic study, how extensive it was, all of the review, the response to comment, the deliberations by all the bodies that heard this. Appropriate, definitely appropriate, definitely good dialogue. I do want to make a comment about the concern I have, and that's that we not be overly prescriptive. These are schools that need to have programs, and those programs are going to evolve over time, and we need the flexibility to see things evolve with the changing needs. So, please don't be overly restrictive, and please deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Okay, that appears to be the last speaker that we have. I do have members of the Board punched in. I will just kick it off with a brief comment of thank you very much to all of the members of the public that came out today. I really respect, these things can be, neighborhood issues can be very personal and emotional, and I know there's strong feelings on both sides, but the way that the proponents of the appeal, as well as the opponents of the appeal, have handled yourselves today is really a testament to your community and to our county, and I sincerely appreciate the civility in which you handled yourself today. It's much appreciated and not always seen. Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, I will certainly second that. I wanted to leave with those very words in terms of recognizing that, you know, this Board has seen a number of appeals over the years, and they're not always as, quite often as pleasant as it is today. It sounds strange to say that, but even neighbors that respectfully disagree with each other are obviously being very polite about their positions, and I am really, really delighted that the young men from Jesuit actually get to see that, because it's becoming rarer and rarer in public life. I do want to thank staff for their time and energy that they've put into this. I think, as was just mentioned by our last speaker, this has been exhaustive, and that means it's been exhaustive for our staff as well. And I think that they've been very deliberate in their attempts to be thoughtful about conditions and being somewhat of an intermediary between parties. And then finally, I just want to assure everyone in the audience that you have a tremendous advocate and representative in Supervisor Desmond. He has, I know, not taken this lightly at all, and we all know he's a proud alum of Jesuit, and that's understandable, but he has been very, very thoughtful about understanding both sides of this particular issue and making suggestions, as he has in his own way, about, you know, different types of ways to mitigate impact. So, hats off to him as well as your county representatives. So, I look forward to hearing from Supervisor Desmond and following his lead on this one.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. You all were asked to limit your comments, and so I'll try and limit mine as well. I did give this appeal a pretty thorough read-through. I met with my planning commissioner and asked him how that meeting went and what their considerations were. I did not read every page of the EIR, but I went through the statement, the findings of facts, and the overriding considerations, and I looked at the laundry list of things that were found to be less than significant, and the three items that were considered significant but unavoidable, two of which were related to noise, one of which was related to lights. The lights, I think, I've seen from the demonstration of the product, as well as seeing LED lights in practice now. I don't think that's really going to be an issue for the neighborhood, and so it comes down to noise. And I will say that, you know, the, as I asked of staff, the peaks above the 70 dB limit in the county code happened from the cheers of the crowd and from the band playing celebratory music. And I will say, I am biased in this project, not because I'm J. High, class of 90, go Big Red, but because I live across the street from Elk Grove High School, maybe 300, 400 yards from their football stadium. And aside from the church bells Sunday morning at St. Joseph's, I think the football games Friday evenings are about the most joyous sound that I hear in my backyard that doesn't emanate from my own property. And speaking of emanating from my own property, one of Mother Spurber's bad neighbors could hold a party and actually violate the county's sound ordinance more than this project. So, I, you know, I too look forward to hearing from Supervisor Desmond, but I think with the new conditions that have been added here as extra protections, and I will say this is my final comment for the folks, it's going to, the devil's going to be in how this gets rolled out. And if you're not, don't keep that volunteer team deployed to make sure that parking stays tamped down. That's going to be the first thing that elevates this backup to our consideration. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And thank you Supervisor Serna for those comments. I think that speaks volumes about this governing body, that we work very well together and support each other with projects in our respective districts, so I appreciate your kind words. And I couldn't agree more with the characterization of the conversation today. I mean, I've spent a lot of time meeting with those who are opposed, or maybe not entirely opposed, but very concerned, right, about this project. And that's how I would characterize it. You know, I'm obviously not in the community like so many of you, and people bend my ear all the time. They may not want to say it publicly, but they'll bend my ear about what their concerns are. And it's our obligation here to make sure we put conditions in place to mitigate some of those concerns, and also create an avenue to be able to make adjustments if need be. I want to address a few things that, Barbara, that you mentioned and that Elizabeth mentioned on the phone. You know, I'm supportive of the three-year period, but let me tell you that, that doesn't mean that if there isn't compliance, we can't do something about it well beyond that three-year period. It also doesn't mean that beyond that three-year period, if something new happens and we need to reopen this thing up because it is, rises maybe to the level of a nuisance in the community, that this Board can't take action. So, I make that commitment to you, that I will certainly advocate for that if it does become a problem, or if, you know, the conditions aren't complied with. We would obviously try to work through any of these issues, but I don't want you to think that it's three years and that's it. It can never be reopened. We can't hold Jesuits, you know, feet to the fire in terms of the compliance. So, I just want to clear that up ahead of time. In terms of the parking issue, you know, Todd, Dave, and Lou, we had this conversation. Supervisor Kennedy and I were having a little conversation about the enforceability of this, and so I understand with the current condition on the parking, it would be difficult, if not impossible, really to enforce that. But in my mind, obviously, what Jesuit does, your current plan, is very, very effective. If in the future, it becomes a problem, it's not effective, people are gaming the system, well then, I would want to sit down with you and say, okay, how can we address this, right? How can we modify that and make it work? And maybe that is having a discussion with DOT about some neighborhood resident parking. I know people hate that generally in the neighborhoods, but that is something, a discussion we would have to have, and I will remain engaged with you, looking at Matt and Chris out here. And then, you know, one thing that, Matt, you brought up, you brought up an issue you had with one of the conditions about the number of events. So, I'd like to ask you to come up here. You and I have had a discussion about this, and I think, you know, if you look at Jesuit's own calendar of events, that would be using light and sound, that is 23 events on your own calendar. And, you know, I want to be very, I don't want to say cautious, but let's be mindful of really the impetus for this is the heat of the events during football season primarily. And, you know, I am supportive of this, but I do think we have to have a limit on the number of events that will be at night using- that will be at night using sound and lights at the same time. I think that's prudent, and I think my proposal is that 25 event or number, because then that covers the 23 that Jesuit themselves outlined, plus an additional two in case you want some flexibility to add something else, maybe something that's unanticipated. But you mentioned you have concerns with that, and I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, and thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I did want to, before I get there, I would be remiss if I did not thank staff as well. Ms. Gutierrez in particular has worked a lot of time spent on this project, and she's been fantastic. So I did want to make sure I recognize her, as well as Julie Newton, has been great to work with from your staff.
And Todd and Elizabeth.
Todd, Elizabeth, and Dave as well, but I was going to run out of my list here soon. If I could, getting back to the condition, so you are correct. We submitted a chart that identified anticipated usage of the light based upon what our historical average has been, and what we know on average is what is utilized at Jesuit. As you correctly indicate, we identify five regular season football games, 10 regular season lacrosse games, for a total of 15, plus eight playoff-type events, for a grand total of 23. The proposed condition gets us to 25. The concern is that every four years, there's a realignment of leagues. Leagues grow and contract based upon the number of teams that are involved in each league. We know that Jesuit is entering a new league next year. The new league we're entering into has more lacrosse teams, and therefore the number of regular season lacrosse games is likely to go up by two next year, just based upon the league that we will then be in. That gets us to 25 right off the bat. And I think the concern is, if football is successful, and we have two, three playoff games, and lacrosse is successful, and we have more than one home playoff game, which historically has been our average, but we have faith that we're going to have two or three next year, what we don't want to end up in is a situation where we have successful teams, and then it comes to playoffs, and we have to turn off the lights, that they're not allowed to actually play the last of their seasons, because we had a number stuck at 25 that didn't somehow make room for successful programs. With that request, what we would like is recognizing that 25 is a reality of next year. What we would be interested in is 30, is what we think would be reasonable, which would allow us to accommodate maximum success of the team, but still provide the neighbors an absolute number where they know we are not to exceed a certain number. In addition to that, we do have the calendar of events that we put out pursuant to our conditions, where we'd identify the games that we anticipate, which we expect would stay within the 25 range that you're putting out. Only if we were successful and entered into playoffs, would we then exceed that number, and we would then notify the neighbors pursuant to the condition of approval that's there as well for the calendar.
Okay. My first rebuttal to that is, nothing would preclude Jesuit from having a game on a Saturday, of course, right, regardless of whatever sport it is. I mean, I don't want to get into back and forth with you about events, but I would almost rather see proof of concept of this, and certainly nothing would preclude Jesuit from coming back and modifying this conditional use permit and adding more events if need be. The other question I had for you, and I had a little bit of a discussion, I know Dave and Todd are talking here, but is it possible to have, you know, some, you actually asked about this, some kind of a mechanism where it would be an easier modification to come back if you wanted to have a couple additional events in a year? Is that, I'd like to hear, Todd, maybe your discussions about whether we could incorporate something like that.
Sorry. Supervisor Desmond, my response to that is, for clarity for the neighborhood, I would like to see that number in the condition. Obviously, I don't, I'm sensitive to what the applicant is speaking to as to the potential future success of their teams. I think there's an opportunity for us as staff to work with both the applicant and the community to make sure that they're notified of any potential additional events. Well, my primary concern is, I want to be as transparent as possible. Not saying the applicant isn't doing that. I just want to have a sense in the community that they know what they're getting.
And that's, yeah, and I agree with that sentiment as well. I am, you know, I'm, I'd be willing to maybe a couple extra, but at 30, I don't want to go that high. So why don't we, how about 27? That would be my, that would be my recommendation. And I'm going to incorporate that into my motion in a moment here.
And I'm looking at the athletic director.
Okay, well, that's good.
And if we see that, we would come back, obviously, for an amendment to the use permit. We would have a robust discussion at this board.
Thank you, okay. So that gives us several more than above what you actually had, your historical offer. So I'll just finish with this before I make a motion, is I think this is a, this is going to be a great benefit to the community. I mean, I think we're going to make sure that it's done in a way that mitigates the negative repercussions, but I too am a big supporter of seeing Friday night football and the vibrancy that it brings to a community, and the support that it brings to small businesses in a community. I've actually spoken to several of business owners at Five Points there, and they will be thrilled with this as well, because I think it'll be a shot in the arm for a lot of them. I think what we've seen in unincorporated areas in Sacramento County is a lot of people moving up to the foothills, where these brand-new high schools are being built, and they have all these great amenities, and they have lights and everything else. This is an opportunity to bring back, you know, a higher caliber of football product in Carmichael, and I'm very excited about it. And I think that everybody in the community should be excited and proud of this. And I also will support, would support lights at Rio, and would support lights at Encina High School, because I think equity is an important consideration as well for these high schools. So with that, I would make a motion to support staff's recommendation to deny the appeal and approve the use permit with the additional conditions that you distributed to us and that Kimber put on the overhead, as well as the additional two conditions, I believe, that the applicant asked for. And I don't know if my colleagues need to, would like to see those, or if that's enough.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Could we, before we get any further, I just want to make one comment, and that's just because I don't know if Ms. Hughes is still on the line, but I want the applicant team to know, just for the record, that the board was in receipt of the PowerPoint. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And my, just so you know, my amendment is, yes, those, or my motion is, those four new conditions with the one change from 25 to 27 events. So that would be my motion.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. If, if, if everybody could leave kind of quietly as much as you can, we still have business to conduct. Thank you.
Keep it under 70 decimals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so for item 50, this is your appointment from your own.
When it quiets down.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought he was talking to me. Okay, for item 50, this is the appointment from your own ranks, and this is regarding the County Leadership Advisory Committee. So in your report, currently, who sits in this seat is David Villanueva, our county executive, and we are making a recommendation to appoint David, Dave.
Move staff recommendation.
Monte. Unanimous vote.
51.
Okay, for your nominations, you are continuing to June 11, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnas, Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. You're also continuing to July 9, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And continuing to July 23, Building Board of Appeals, Elk Grove, Casumnas Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board, Public Health Advisory Board in the Sacramento County, I'm sorry, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Your first item is the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to July 9.
Thank you. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council.
I'd like to reappoint Alice Montez and nominate Zach Clark and Don Keller.
Okay, and would you like to waive the process for Alice Montez?
Sure.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And then for the North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Please continue to July 23. Thank you. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to July 23.
Okay, and Supervisor Desmond.
Continue to July 9, please.
And Supervisor Hume.
Please continue to July 23.
Thank you. Okay, Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to July 23.
Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to July 23.
Thank you. And then the Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Frost. Continue to July 23, please. Okay, thank you. And that concludes your nominations, and now we're on to county executive comments.
Thank you, Flo. Just a couple of quick comments. Yesterday, the National Weather Service issued an excessive heat warning. We've shared with you that that activated many of our cooling shelters. So Tuesday through Thursday, we have those happening with the county OES in partnership with City of Sacramento, City of Elk Grove, and SACRT offering free rides to and from those conditions. Just as a reminder, that those, information about those cooling shelters can be found at 211 or 211Sacramento.org. North A's Emergency Shelter is one location. The Outreach and Engagement Center is another location. Sam and Bonnie Pinnell Center in the Mettaview area, and the Waxford Center in Elk Grove. And again, Sacramento is, SACRT is helping with that. The other thing I would just bring up is, in Memorial Day, kicks off the official recreational season for the county parks, our county parks, and safety is, of course, our top priority. They started their campaign of "Life Looks Good On You," and they've come up with some, what we believe are the reasons why folks are not wearing their life jackets. So Mr. Michael Matsui from one of our park rangers created this video, and I thought it was important to share with you and possibly share with the community. Also, if you would like links to this sent to you, we can absolutely do that, so you can include that in your newsletters. And that's all my comments after the 30-second video.
He made that on his own?
Yes.
I think he's moonlighting as a video producer.
I think that's true. I think that's very true, actually. I understand he does do that on the, I'm not sure if he does the ranger on the side or the video production on the side.
Very well done.
He does it very good, and it'll help us get the word out and get folks to practice safety on the river, especially during these high heat types.
That's great. He stepped up. That's cool. Anybody else? Any board member? Anybody else? All right. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned. We'll see you tomorrow.